About. Thank you.
Earl.
He's not joining us. Mayor? Don't know, but he's not going to be here tonight. I know that.
Oh, it's 2:00 PM, so I'll call this meeting to order. Committee, the whole meeting for the City of Palm River for Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. First item is the adoption of the agenda. Anybody have additions to the agenda? Counselor? Isaac.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Under related items, I would like to add, um, Pride Month and flagpole vandalism. And I have a related motion about, um, about, uh, directing staff to, um, work with Cuthbert Pride to put a float in the Pride Parade in July.
Okay, so that would be under, uh, late items, which I think is 13.1. If counsel is willing to accept that, everybody okay with that or any objections? Counselor Elliott?
Uh, no objection, and if we have no other additions, I would move the adoption of the agenda with that addition.
Second. Counselor Alameda? Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? Next item is item number three. Motion to close the meeting to the public. Anybody have a motion to make? Counselor Elliott?
I move that the committee move into a closed meeting to discuss matters covered by the community charter under sections 91. I, the receipt of advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose.
Second.
Second.
Oh, well, thank you.
It's an old way of doing things. It's an old way of doing things.
That was the old style way. That was the old style way. All those in favor of doing it the quick way? Any opposed? Let's carry unanimously.
Chair, can I just clarify the motion we had on?
We will reconvene to the public at 3:30, and you can ask whatever questions you want at the appropriate time on the newly invented agenda. Thanks. I'll be adjourning to the upstairs committee room.
Your seat's up there, Greg.
No nuts, but there's no donuts. Good. So. You all.
Fire, yeah?
Yeah.
The.
My elbows.
All those things? Oh, we can have some order. I will call to order the June 3 Committee of the whole meeting for the city of Powell River. You've just completed our closed meeting. And we're reconvening. Want to recognize that this meeting is taking place on the traditional territories of the Talaman people who have lived here since time immemorial. We now have a public input period and we can hear from the public who would like to make a comment. Two minutes or less on your legislative matters, committee recommendations, or new business. So, sir, if you'd like to make a comment, let us know your name and
This working? Hi, my name is Roger Artigz. I'm the president of the Outdoor Recreation User Group and vice president. Yeah, better. President of the O-Rug Outdoor Recreation User Group and vice president of the Knuckleheads Winter Recreation Association. I would like to comment on the section 10.2, the Community Forest Spring Grants. I, we are a bit concerned about, as you know, there was a lot of discussion about this. And as of, I believe, March 20th at the resolution 2582, we were led to believe that that meant that there would be, we would be going back to the 2223 procedures, which had no limits. And the report and recommendations that are before you tonight concerning the grants have every single one of the alternatives use a $425,000 limit, which was a percentage thing based on previous resolutions and such. So we would just like to ensure that, you know, that we were very impressed that you wanted to work collaboratively with the Community Forest Board and work out a way to figure this all out collaboratively. And we're just concerned that now you have a report in front of you not really reflecting that and hope that you all will make your decisions in the spirit of what was discussed and deliberated. And so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. With 18 seconds to spare too. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else with public input?
Hi, my name is Catherine Yorlefson. I've been trying to find out who owns Seaboard Hotels Limited since I received my notice for this amendment. I asked the planning department and the response was, we don't know. I asked the planning staff if a feasibility study was done or would be. The answer was no. I find it astounding that the city would even accept an application for development this size without this basic information. I'd like to know if Jack Barr is the owner of Seaboard. I'd like to know if Mr. Barr is not the owner of Seaboard. Does the city have a letter from Seaboard authorizing Mr. Barr to act on its behalf? An internet search shows one director for Seaboard, Brian Charles Green. A further show shows that Mr. Green is also director of Franklin Wadcorp India of Mumbai, India. As a taxpayer, I am subsidizing this application process. The $2,500 fee has long been spent. So I believe it is reasonable for me to want this information. If my quiet, peaceful, daily life is to be seriously uprooted and forever changed, I would like to at least to know for who. Seaboard has owned this RM3 zoned land for decades. They could have in the past and even today proceed with a reasonable development of this RM3 parcel. To quote Jack Barr, "We could build four units at a time. You just build as you go." So what is really driving Seaboard to want, not need, this rezoning? For Mr. Barr, build it as you go. When an RM3 development is successful, then apply to expand to the C1 parcel. If this zoning is approved, the ink won't be dry on the paper when Seaboard land value increases by millions. The city needs to be sure we get what we need if this happens, and this surely is not it.
Thank you. Anyone else with any public input?
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Bruce Kipling, 7130 Westminster Street. I have a few proposals or feedback regarding the proposals. Starting with several points that the, there is a non-compatibility with the sustainable community, official community plan. The reduction in the C4 zoning, the tourist zoning of the hotel reduces the future development potential of the hotel and discourages any future potential to promote and encourage new investment and business on or near the site. The city should be promoting and encouraging long-term economic activity, not reducing it. The proposed development is not compatible with the identity of the immediate neighborhood. Due to the high density of the development, the pattern of urban development is not compatible with the infrastructure servicing capability of the city. It does not exist within a safe, existing and proposed public transportation corridor. The retention of environmental assets important to the city would be reduced. Traffic, an estimated 300 to 660 vehicles and an estimated 215 to 600 residents within the proposed development would have a profound impact within the community resulting in noise, congestion, traffic, and pollution. Parking, there'll be the spillover effect with parking onto neighborhood streets. This is very important for most of the neighborhood, my neighbors. The rerouting of the roads would cause significant traffic and noise to surrounding neighborhoods. Additionally, the high volume of traffic onto neighborhood streets would pose a risk to people, children, and pets. This is very important. Furthermore, the current Liquor Control Board regulations prohibit entry and egress points of a licensed LCB establishment onto a rural or residential road. Is the city going to be superseding the LCB provincial regulations? Is the distillery within the proposed C4 zoning?
Excuse me, I want to point out that you've used up your time so far. Counsel
I just have some quick recommendations.
Can I finish?
Sorry?
Just gonna ask counsel if they give permission for you to continue.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
These are some quick recommendations. The Beach Gardens proposal should be considered as a comprehensive development, as such as the near-term future development of the Beach Gardens Hotel should be incorporated in the overall plan. The amendment to the OCP should be deferred until the city receives additional information from the applicant such as environmental studies, view corridor shade studies, city utility impact studies, archaeological studies, and in concert with this layup for a nation. Furthermore, the city should consult and receive final reports from external agencies such as the Department of Highways and the Else Liquor Control Board branch regarding critical aspects of the proposed project. I think most of the residents in the area are not opposed to development. It's the scale and magnitude of the development. If we had a proposal with a RM3 RM3 zoning going forward, there'd be no need to amend the OCP. There'd be no need to reroute roads. There'd be no need to subdivide the property. And the again, within the RM3 zoning and limited development, most residents' concerns would be alleviated. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ask him to give us
Pardon me?
Wondering if the gentleman could give us written versions.
Do you have that in writing? You can give it to staff if you'd like to. If you have your presentation in writing, you could give a copy to our corporate officer. Okay, I don't want to take up a lot of time. You can just give it to our corporate officer if you have it. Okay, thank you.
Good day, counsel. Let me introduce myself. I'm Debbie Thistlethwaite. And I live in the vicinity of the proposed development of the Beach Gardens Resort. I actually live right across the street from it, so I overlook it. Not included in the report that you received today or a couple days ago is the fact that there is going to be a loss of ocean views from properly, from the properties directly across the highway from the development property. It is understood that the drawing submitted only one building concept and the developer is not bound by it and can change their development plan at any time. At this time, the property is not zoned RM4. And there is already mentioned that the application or the applicant could apply to have a height variance. This is very concerning because if we go past that 44 feet, we are going to lose our views. We're going to lose our it's going to have major repercussions on our property values and any future resale. The highway is not police regulated for speeding. The speed limit is posted at 50 kilometers an hour. But speed is definitely a factor of this highway. We easily, myself, witnessed 70 to 100 kilometers an hour with speed going through there. There has been a child pedestrian fatality at the corner of Joyce Avenue and the highway. I myself was in a major accident in front of my driveway at the Beach Gardens driveway. I was rear-ended at a speed of over 90K with the injuries that I sustained. That's what they estimated the speed of that person who was, who had hit me, rear-ended me was. There's also been other accidents there. There was a van that flipped over on its side at Caribou and Highway. A late, a young lady had a van and she blew the stop sign at Caribou and flipped her van right on the highway there. So I don't think the traffic study has been, I'm going to say properly done. I think it needs to have more look into it and complete properly by the city, not just by the developer. These are definitely factors to take into account.
I'm going to interrupt you because your two minutes is up and I'll just ask counsel. They would approve you going over the time limit.
Thank you. These are definitely factors to take into account for this development plan. And I ask if you would want this in your own neighborhood. Thank you, counsel, for taking the time to listen to me today.
Thank you. Anyone else? People can't hear you unless you're standing at the microphone and speaking into it.
My name is Bob Allen. I live two doors down from the Beach Gardens on Westminster Street. I was a fellow who got together the petition, petition from all the neighbors who live on Westminster that they really don't want the corner of Westminster and Caribou opened up. It is a nightmare. 2006, it was opened for some repair work and the barricades were never replaced. And it was after cajoling with the city. And the city said, well, when you come time with a, with a major development, look at the traffic and we'll figure it out there. Joining from the liquor board, who I believe, and there's documentation which you have on file, made a condition in 1976 that that intersection and traffic going onto Caribou and Lilwet was barred. That documentation is in the packages that I sent you, which you have in your files. Those are the primary concerns of the people in Westminster. Density is there, but where are these people going to entrance onto the highway? Shouldn't be from Caribou, shouldn't be from Lilwet, but somewhere up towards that. And I've made a suggestion once before, if the Beach Gardens property or this developer ran a roadway and easement all the way up the inside of their property adjacent to Caribou, come onto Westminster, I'm sorry, come onto Caribou near the top. They can entrance there. People from Westminster are there. And now you've got one intersection on the highway, which makes the highway department happy. And you could have that, that intersection three quarters of the way up. So nobody's coming around the corner quickly and T-bowing somebody. And there you sort it out. Lilwet is just almost, it's no bigger than a back lane. You're going to run people out onto, onto that street. Caribou is really no bigger than a back lane and you're going to run people out there too. So do it all for, like, think about the traffic coming out of the Beach Gardens. There's semi-trailers, there's heavy equipment.
I'm not going to surprise you when I say, excuse me, but you've used up more than your two minutes.
Think about that as you
Please?
Thank you.
If I could speak? Okay, you can wrap it up.
I'm sorry. Yeah, as
No, if you're going to continue speaking,
Yes, just
I'm going to ask counsel for permission to you, for you to go continue beyond the guidelines that are in our agenda.
Very much.
Counsel. Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate that. So as, as you're making decisions that affect this property now and in the building development stage, yes, density is one thing and that's okay. But have them make a comprehensive traffic plan which takes the traffic out of the Beach Gardens, out of the lower development properties, and maybe join it onto the top of, of Caribou somewhere and flow out to the highway. But, but in a sense that nobody wants to shortcut it and go south and come back down on Westminster. Go up three quarters of the block and have the Beach Gardens around, around a roadway, all the way up the inside of the property. End of story. I was happy. Westminster's happy. Most of the other people are happy with, with the traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, staff, do we have anybody online who wants to make some public input? Anyone else for public input?
Chair, just according to procedure by law, it's a maximum of three people at public input period. Just need a unanimous vote of counsel if you want to ask further to come up.
Doesn't look like we have anyone else who wants to speak. So we can go on to the next item. And under general matters, I probably should have pointed out before that some people might have noticed that the mayor is not here. He's been away at the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference and wasn't able to get back for this meeting. So the next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Anybody have a motion? Counselor Elliott?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay, I don't think we need a second or a committee at all. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Don't see any hands. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carry unanimously. We are now down to item 10.1. We have Greg Hempel, president of the Powell River Community Forest regarding spring 2025 grant recommendations. Mr. Hempel, this is your opportunity to tell us what you think. Always look forward to that.
As usual, you have a bit of a PowerPoint here. Just will get it up and running. These are just speaking notes. If I, I'm not going to follow them word by word.
I'm, I'm going to, so I'm, unfortunately, some of the language out there, point of order chair is is not good to staff and I don't think it should be up on the screen. Because we deal with, with staff matters and HR stuff enclosed.
What, what are you objecting to particularly?
Well, I don't want to read it aloud because then I would be, but the second point, the second sentence of the second point. Well, I don't want to read it aloud because then I would be, but the second point, uh, the second sentence of the second point.
You do, uh, can you just read us what you have to say and possibly skip over the second part?
Yeah, no problem there, and likely I would have skipped over it anyways. Okay, um, yeah, I'll, I'll see if there's anything else that we should go past there. Uh, thank you for receiving our delegation. Uh, we always look forward to, uh, coming to council and talking about our grant application review and recommendations. This is for our spring twenty twenty-five recommendations. Now, we've reviewed the, the package that's come to council. Obviously, there's more to it than just our recommendations. Uh, so I did want to speak to some of the broader issues before we jump into each application there. So, um, some of this is going over old ground, but I think it's, uh, it's worthwhile doing that. So if you recall, at the March twentieth council meeting regarding draft bylaw two seven five one, which is the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine five-year budget plan, this draft, council passed a motion that contributions to the city projects and nonprofits be delivered in the same process as previous years. Um, thank, uh, thank you to all council for rescinding the proposed cap, ten percent cap on monies available in the fund. The council motion further directed that the draft twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine financial plan be amended accordingly. Uh, yet here we are, and there still is a reference to that ten percent number as a budget amount for NPO grants. So I, I don't know how that takes place. I'd like to understand, uh, given the direction, why it, uh, still keeps coming up. So our spring twenty twenty-five grant recommendations follow the existing grant process, the bylaw, policy, application process, and the evaluation criteria. That's what we're bringing forward today. Uh, we shared the application list and the individual application files with city staff and council back in early April. Uh, as you know, our board does pretty extensive follow-ups with applicants to ensure we have the info we need to make informed recommendations to council. And in some cases, that includes adjustments to the project scope and/or the budget there. Um, we actually enjoy that process of connecting with all these great community groups there. There is comments on the other packages that are either outdated in error. Uh, and I guess what I would advise is there'd be some direction to staff to just make sure, uh, either talk to us or even better, talk to the applicants to make sure they have the most updated information in the recommendations there. Refresher. I'm not going to go over this in detail, but, uh, we've talked lots about the bylaw. Um, it keeps coming up in little places here and there. Um, the one that I want to highlight is just the second part of it, that before any money is used from the fund, a city will seek input from Powell River Community Forest Board. Gentle reminder there. Uh, there is charter requirements, um, part six, division four of reserves funds. Pretty specific direction on how monies, including interest in a reserve fund, can be utilized and accounting for. This is really notable when it comes to a fund that was created for a specific purpose, such as bylaw twenty twelve zero eight. Uh, just a couple of things on, on basically policy direction that's been around for a while. Uh, councils previously requested that our input be provided as a formal motion of the PRFC Board recommending which grants council should consider approving for both city and community group projects. An example we have here, I know the city is saying, well, it's already approved, is the twenty percent contribution to transit shelters. Council can now confirm they received our input prior to approving this grant. The policy calls for periodic joint review of, uh, with Powell River Community Forest of monies in the fund, the status of previous grant projects and the current application list. We've had difficulty obtaining this financial information or the status of the previous city grant projects. It's been requested, including by Mayor Rosnoe, on behalf of the Joint Working Committee uh, back in April nine. So I'm not quite sure why there's reluctance to share this public information there. So turning the page, um, positive news, uh, that's the amount of money that's available in the fund there. I just wanted to highlight a lot of our positive, uh, situation results from, um, our board declaring a record-sized twenty twenty-three dividend of over six million dollars. And we also held considerable monies in reserve to balance out what we knew was going to be a twenty twenty-four smaller dividend there. So starting last year, the twenty twenty-four monies, um, we were at, uh, six and a half million plus interest. Uh, council awarded, uh, three point four million for spring grants and another four hundred thousand in the fall. Um, changes that have come forward as we look forward to twenty twenty-five, the forecasted two point nine million, second community forest grant for the pool roof is now funded by monies from the growing community funds. Obviously, that takes a lot of pressure off, uh, funds available for other projects. And council decided not to include a new, any new grant projects for the recreation complex pending completion of the strategic review. Um, so there is already an existing backlog of fully funded projects for the complex there. We can talk more about the complex, obviously, going back a number of years. Uh, um, I don't know how, maybe for ten years, it's been a strategic priority of councils and our logic, largest concentration of grants. And, uh, both previous and existing ones yet to do has been the recreation complex. And there should be no reason to believe that we won't support those grants going forward there. So starting twenty twenty-five, there was, uh, two point eight million dollars, uh, available for grants in the fund, plus monies returned from projects completed under budget and large amounts of interest from available monies and committed but incomplete grant projects. For perspective, interest alone will cover most of these recommended grants. That's good news. Uh, puts no additional pressure on, um, other planned projects down the road. Uh, there's still a large backlog of community group projects, but we're seeing some of them completed. And you'll see in my pictures, uh, I, we, we didn't get an update on city grant projects, but I think there is a few that are either completed or soon to be completed there. We would certainly help celebrate that. Our declared dividend for, uh, for twenty twenty-four is, uh, three point seven million. This puts our fund at, uh, probably, once it's deposited, at around seven million dollars of available funds, highest it's ever been. So keep that in mind when you look at whether there's concerns, uh, giving out some grants here. So just, uh, so what does all this mean? Uh, there's more than enough money for both spring and fall twenty twenty-five grants for NPOs. And if there's, if the city has grant projects, which may be ready, um, also those ones in the fall. We hope there is, um, don't ignore that there's a lot of smaller projects that could be done quickly. And, um, it would be nice to see a list of things, the sort of quick wins there. Uh, grant monies are available to cover the next couple of years of eligible city grant projects identified in the approved five-year capital plan and budget. So there's no, there's no issues there. Uh, the limiting factor is not monies. Um, and, and council's talked a lot about the capacity that's needed to complete some of these projects there. Uh, there will be, even if we try, there will still be a large surplus of available monies from this year that will carry forward to twenty twenty-six. And, um, we'll see what happens with the economy, but we will probably still have a substantial twenty twenty-five dividend to add in the spring of twenty twenty-six. As I said, once the plan for the recreation complex is complete, uh, we're, we're certainly there to help you, uh, work with you on any investments that are needed. We know some of these existing projects are very large, and I'm sure, uh, over the next year, so that'll be a, a big push there. We are soon to be in third quarter here, so it is a good time to compare what's on the paper plans with kind of what's going on with the revised project construction schedules. And I know we used to, uh, this was sort of the time of year where Tor would come in and give us a dose of reality, but, uh, uh, it's good to track how this goes there. Always have to have a few pictures there. You guys know where this is? Mid-level connector, and it's looking good. It's, um, the nicest road in Powell River. Um, beautiful walk through there. I, I don't know if it's finished yet, but, uh, certainly a pretty quick walk now from Brooks through to the complex there. And I think once it grows in, uh, um, it'll look really great, so. And it, if it's not completed, it's pretty close to completed there, so. Play that's not me. We, sometimes we have a theme to what we're, uh, showing with these pictures. We're kind of all over the board here, but this first slide is just, uh, showing some of the things that, uh, community groups can do themselves and do them fairly efficiency, efficiently, and also worked with, uh, um, with city staff, uh, building permit sections, building inspections, um, city looking after the money distribution there. These pictures match up to some of the backlog ones that have been around for quite a few years there. So I think as long as we can, uh, be flexible, there are ways to, uh, deliver these types of projects there. Um, you're probably wondering why we have these two pictures together. Uh, if you recall back, uh, when we did the first pool roof grant, um, three point two million, that was, I think, three times the largest grant we'd ever done. Uh, that put a lot of pressure on the ability to do other, uh, grants. And we went to, um, the Cycling Association and asked if they could, uh, put their project into phases there, and that's what they did for us, which helped free up some money. We also offered to, uh, do the, uh, Steam Donkey project for, uh, can't remember the name of the park there by the lake there. So we did that direct. It, it was on the books for a number of years, first of all, the museum and then the city. And, uh, we offered to do that directly with the Forest Heritage Society, so. Um, there is ways, uh, to, uh, to make these things work. And if there was any doubt about whether, uh, the Mount Mahoney project was a good investment, if you're here two weeks ago with eight hundred riders and their families, it was pretty amazing, uh, pretty amazing sight, so. Um, like I say, uh, there is, uh, there is groups out there. Some of them are fairly large, and some of them have, uh, pretty experienced, uh, people and, uh, capacity under themselves and have, uh, have completed grant, grants on their own. Um, so we worry that we sometimes get caught up in, uh, in, uh, the bureaucracy that goes with, oh, it's got to be done one way because there's, uh, there's a lot of ways these, uh, projects can be completed there, so. Um, yeah, just, uh, um, we're going to talk about the, uh, healthcare auxiliary. Uh, this is a project we were a minor contributor to. I think we contributed like twenty percent, but it's great to be able to partner up with, uh, other groups that are doing things in the community there. And good to support, uh, this is the, um, Townsite Community Association, not to be confused with the Rate Pairs Association. They're out there doing stuff to look after the, uh, Triangle Gardens here, so. And their experience with staff has been excellent, so. And as far as the heritage lighting project, they're working side by side with, uh, city staff on that, so. It's a good model to carry forward there. Um, picture above is the, uh, I mean, we're heavily invested, uh, through grants, or the city's heavily invested through grants into the Mclack project. They're, uh, pretty close to completion. They figure another month or so. Um, I know that we're going to talk about that in our grant recommendations, but it is a rare experience to, uh, to say, okay, what does it take to just get over the top in that last, uh, little shot there? So, uh, um, it, if you're by there, I'm sure you can pop in, take a look there. It's pretty impressive, actually, so. And sometimes little grants give you a pretty good feeling in the community there, so. Thanks, we'll move on to, uh, our recommendations. Uh, and this was in our letter, this is our formal ones. Uh, they're a public document, as you, uh, you all know, so, uh, um, I don't know, what's the date on that, Chris? May nineteenth, so they've been in, uh, in the works for quite a while there, so. Let me just catch up with, uh, we do have a couple of, uh, conflicts, so if you see me leave, it's because somebody else is going to talk about one, one or, we have two that are, somebody else is going to speak to, so. Okay. Hopefully I can see these. Uh, no, no, this is good. Um, so just upfront, um, the, the process is extensive follow-up. Um, there are some good projects, uh, that are maybe not ready or need some adjustment, or, uh, the time is not right. Uh, those carry forward to our fall process there. So, uh, we support where they're going, but, uh, we don't feel it's, uh, at a point where we can make a rec, a solid recommendation to council to fund it right now. So, uh, that is our process, uh, they stay under consideration there. A couple of other things, um, that council's probably aware of is just, uh, a lot of the opportunities for matching grants and, um, rebates and those sorts of things. It's kind of dried up, uh, after the election. Uh, they were sort of on hold before the election, but, uh, uh, it is a reality. Uh, we would still suggest that applicants proceed in trying to apply for those, but, uh, um, it, they may not have the options they did in, uh, in the past. Everybody's belt tightening there, so. Okay, we'll, uh, we'll go through the, so, um, obviously, I'll just run through them if there's any you want further explanation. Uh, wing it, if you want more detail, uh, we do have detailed notes, and we can follow up this meeting and provide that to you there, so. Um, I don't know how much you want me to go on on this stuff there, so.
What I'd like you to do, Mr. Hempel, is just go through your recommendations.
Yep.
Your report and your recommendation. We have a staff report.
Yep.
That has recommendations as well, and then council will go through those. So if you'll just give your report, then I'll open it up to council to.
Okay.
Ask any questions, and we're not going to go through it three different times today.
I appreciate that.
Decisions will happen after the staff report.
So, uh, Powell River Academy of Music, um, this, this one's been on the books for, uh, over a year. Uh, at one time, they believed that they still had a few years of life. Um, now they're at a point where they feel like they got to go ahead based on, uh, uh, advice they got. Um, and so, uh, obviously, a well-used former school. Um, uh, and they've, uh, it's really a hub for, uh, that area there, so, uh, um, good that it's being utilized rather than, uh, doing a demolition and, or selling it to somebody and then have it sit as a derelict building or something like that, so. Uh, City of Powell River, uh, twenty percent contribution to BC Transit for bus shelters at the Townsite Mall. Um, that one was previously on the books back to last year, uh, so good to see that going ahead. Uh, Friends of Cathat, clothing and food support for vulnerable students. It is capital, uh, I mean, it's, what it is basically is direct action. It's food cards, clothing. Um, I think most of you are aware of the concept there, so I won't go into it. It's, it's. It's, it's more money, but we're hopeful that this is going to carry them for more than one year. And they do get contributions from a number of other sources, including a lot of voluntary, voluntary stuff there. Land Bay Community Club, replacing their current heating oil furnace with a heat pump. This is one where they haven't had success as a nonprofit, being able to get the matching grants. Doesn't mean they shouldn't be required to apply at least. I think that's probably an added recommendation we would add. Once, once council decides to go with that, the staff can put that as a condition. It's not, it's not that they might be successful, but I think it's a step we would like to see. Timberland.
The Fine Arts Club at Timberland Park, they've been in existence since 1957. Right now, they occupy one of the buildings at the Timberland, and they wanted to add an extension to it. There were some questions about the, whether there needs to be some environmental studies done on it to see if there's problems with soil or chemicals or whatever there. That was done when they upgraded the interior of the building about 10 years ago. And they, they had it all tested and they have all the documentation for that. And, and they're, they're clean and there shouldn't be any problem with, with that. Right now, they have 50 members and they're looking for, well, they're looking for more space. They've bought a new kiln that they want to put inside of this new space. And they will be able to add two more tables to the, to the fine arts building there. And they have a waiting list of 50 people right now that they've cut off. And I've heard rumors that there's about 200 people that would like to sign up for the Fine Arts Club. And they're badly in need of expanding the building and getting a permanent home for the new kiln that they have. They have contractors involved. They're, I understand, one of the comments was that there's a problem because it's a city-owned building and the city contractors don't have the capacity right now to deal with that. They're not looking for help from the city. They didn't look for help 10 years ago. And I know also the, the dancing club, the
Stardust.
Stardust, that's right. They also had a grant a while back to upgrade their building there. And it wasn't an issue that it was a city building or a city contractor that was having to do the work and all that sort of stuff. They did it with volunteers and contractors of their own. And that's what the Fine Arts Club is proposing to do as well. So.
If you don't mind, council, there's a long report to go through. I'd like to go through the report and we'll go around and the counselors can ask as many questions as they want.
Powell River Lawn Bowling Club, structural and accessibility upgrades. Accessibility, there used to be a lot of grants for that. Apparently that's, that's dried up a little bit there. Backcountry Horsemen, Powell River Chapter. Contribution for a new horse paddock and camping area, one of our user groups, and they range pretty far. They have a commitment from Recreation Sites and Trails to provide a permit. And the licensee in that area has also offered to do, donate machine time to make the project happen there. It is one of those ones we could do directly, but we do like to share some credit with council. And it, it lets people know that the fund is not about community forest specifically. It's, it's a fund that, that the city is involved in as well. Resident Creek Residents and Families, contribution to community benefits. We've done a few to the residents there and their families. This seemed like a good project to us there. Powell River Farmers Agriculture Institute, concrete floor for indoor activities at Quonset Hot A. And like a lot of groups, they would take less. And, and, and this, they offered to say, well, if we only can do half, we'll do half. But that doesn't make a sense if we can do it all now and not have them come back in the fall or next year. So Kelly Creek Community Church, phase two, components to enhance community experience, including landscaping, fencing, irrigation. Total of 38,600. Back to their original application, they came with, and I, they approached, we encouraged groups to approach us and discuss what their plans are and what matches up to grants. We suggested that they complete the pavilion and then come back to us with the rest of their plan there. And then there was one piece they dropped. So this, they've completed the pavilion, you saw a picture of that, and it gets a lot of use out there. So this is the second phase. Kathat Parks and Wilderness Society, Mount Trubridge Cabin Repairs and Upgrades. Obviously access is a bit of an issue there, so most of this is just helicopter time to get in there. And it's one of those ones that's seasonal too. They're, they, hopefully we can get the grant monies out to them quickly and that way they can get the work done before it gets snowed in again there. Skookum Food Provisioners Cooperative and Central Farmers Market Committee. I think council's aware of this. Contribution is setting up the market at Willington Beach. I think council's supportive of it and supportive. And I, I may be wrong, but I think it's starting up here pretty soon. Mclack Together We Can Addiction Treatment Facility, contribution to budget shortfall. Subject to, the budget shortfall is quite large, subject to them identifying other commitments. I think for us, yes, we are invested in a big way. But with it closing in on completion, it's a nonprofit. If we could be a contributor to making it, making it at a point that they can announce opening day, which should be a month away, then we felt it was a good investment there. But subject to them coming to the table with other funding commitments there. And it may be, it may be four or five groups for, they, they have markers out all over the place there. Sunshine Music Festival Outdoor Lighting System, shared resource available for other community events. And basically that's, we said that's, we will do it, but it's got to be a shared resource that's available there. So that can either be here or it can be with the regional district there. Powell River Brain Injury Society, they actually applied for 30,000, but they now have gotten half that funding for doing the outside rehabilitation of the garden area there. So Powell River Healthcare Auxiliary, that's no longer hospital auxiliary. Contribution to the Economy Store renovation, this is a big grant. I think everybody knows what's happened there. They've purchased the building where Lyft, Lyft was leasing, pretty substantial money. We like their model, they don't like going into any debt. They've, over time, given out more than $6 million to community projects. Have over 200 volunteers. And this, they requested more. We said, we'll contribute to, to help get you up and running as soon as possible. I mean, it's, it's, in some ways, it's a sad state of affairs, but that economy shop is probably the busiest store in Powell River. So they, they fulfill a great service and so many good volunteers there. Powell River Kings Hockey Society, working with the city. I think it's supported. And the Kings are happy either way, if the city does it or they can do it. So with the support, we can identify money there. So total amount granted is like 1.2 million roughly. And as I said, probably interest alone will cover most of that. What else? Anything else in there? So usually, I guess at council meeting, there'll be a discussion of how to access the money after they're approved. So I won't go into that there. And existing applications remain under consideration for the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. So just for everybody's information, again, we've got your report and your recommendations. The next report on the agenda is a staff report
Yep.
on community forest donations. And we will be making decisions on those. Don't go away. Don't go away. We will be making recommendations there.
Greg, don't go away.
I am going to ask council if they have any questions.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask council to ask any questions they have. It's not an opportunity to debate your recommendations. Answer, it's an opportunity to get information and to look for information they need to know, which they're going to use later in the meeting. Just trying to find a streamlined way to go through this. Because there's a lot of information to discuss, a lot of decisions to be made. I'm going to suggest to council that I go around the table, give everybody a number of opportunities to ask questions, and ask council members to ask two questions. That's one question. And then after they get an answer to that, another question, it'd be two questions. Then we'll go on to the next council person. When the council person said, could I ask a third and fourth question? I'm going to say no. So councillor Alameda, you were the lucky recipient of the first two questions.
I only have one for now, but just for clarity's sake, I think, because I know in our budget process, it was, it was thought that the dividend this year was going to be around 600,000 for grants. Your number is, is over double that amount. So just curious, the information during the budget process changed?
Yeah, and staff was aware of, of, so the 600,000 goes back quite a ways. And we kept staff informed as we went. Obviously, the tax issue is part of the discussion there. But yeah, going into the draft plans, Chris updated staff as we went along as to where it was tracking. It's changed at the last minute because of tax issues that can't be discussed in public.
So you're saying before the draft was, or before the budget was finalized at the end of March or early April, whenever that was, that number was a different number that was presented? Because I feel like our CFO would have reported that that was the case. And that number never changed during the budget process?
Well, the final declaration of dividend takes place at our AGM. And council is represented at our AGM. And so there was a discussion on how that number came about and then how that linked to other pressures. But the CFO had the draft budget before that. And before that, we had an estimate that wasn't that far off of that final number. So it gets shared as we go along in our process there. So some of the estimate, the early estimates probably go back to the fall there. So sorry. The other thing to remember is when we log at the end of the year, it's quite a process to determine what revenue is going to carry, be booked against that year versus carried over to the new year. So that process was also going on there.
Mayor Isaac.
Thank you, Chair. First question, there were some applications.
Right, right now, the questions are for the Community Forest Board. So if you have a question, you can ask it. At the Community Forest Board, these staff will be making a report on the next item on the agenda. We can hear from staff at that time.
Thank you. So there's at least one, well, two maybe, applications that I was expecting as a part of this round. So do you have a list of, of applications that you are not recommending to council?
Well, the council has the list of all applications there. That was shared via Dropbox.
It's not public, the, the ones that you're not recommending to council?
I mean, we've never gone that route where we say, these are the ones we're doing. These are the ones, because they're still in play. The ones not selected get carried forward to the next review period. We do communicate directly with applicants for those reasons. Now, obviously, if council's making their own decisions, then that communication will fall to council to do there. So we, we try to keep them in the loop as to what we're bringing forward. So they're not coming here thinking that, that their expectations were different there. So.
Thank you. And the other question was, I know, I forget the year now, two years ago, last year, where the community forest recommended with staff to hire a project manager to help move projects along.
Yep.
I'm wondering if you've ever considered something similar to support grantees or prospective grantees in grant writing? Because there are so many grants available at the provincial level that we just, because we've had this huge asset in town, we've been able to rely on. But there, I, I see grant announcements from different provincial agencies and with many small organizations getting them around the province. And very rarely we see our own community listed. And so I'm wondering if you've ever explored that idea as a place to direct some funding to help invest in our community kind of further, a grant writing type position?
We haven't, mainly because of our existing criteria. Would, some of those things are worth a discussion. I think the bigger one for us is the grant process has developed into a much more difficult thing. Part of it is we make more money, we get more applications. So you've got a group of volunteers doing that. We like it, but at some point it becomes overwhelming. And I know Chris would rather be doing forestry work. So one of the things we've talked about is increasing our own capacity to, to have those conversations with our grant applicants. But yeah, I don't, I'm not sure how we would approach that, given what our criteria is. I think it's a good idea. Maybe the city can have a position there.
Biggest questions? A person? Right there. Question is, the question came up at the community forest, or the regional hospital district as to whether this was a healthcare facility. This is, so the question is in the interest of sharing revenue sources. And my thinking is if that, if that money to top up to finish that project, which I understand is more than what they were originally budgeted or expecting, can come from the regional hospital district, then it could take some pressure off these grants. What's your understanding of that at the moment?
Well, they wanted to get a definition of what a healthcare facility is. Cindy, you probably know this better than I. And then that would, they wanted to make sure legally they could contribute to the project there. So they would be one of the funding So they would be one of the funding partners, if you say, that would, they have been approached, so that would be a possibility. But they also have the same sort of inquiries in with Mental Health Canada and Vancouver Coastal Health, and even the Rhodberg Foundation, who gave a gift of, I forget what it was, $600,000 or something, so that. And I think it's attractive when you can say, okay, we can, we can be there announcing the completion of this project there. So I think what we can do is help bring those other people to the table by offering this up there. That's that's been my fault, my thought. It's fair if council says, you know what, we we're done, we we put lots of money, it will open. But it's, you know, we kind of threw it out there. We were hoping for somebody else to be the big negotiator and bring people to the table there.
So just to follow up that question, there there hasn't been any money come from the regional hospital district for that particular project, has there? I am aware of Vancouver Coastal's commitment to it.
Yeah, when the announcement was done?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I didn't know some of the players there, so.
Okay, I am aware of the.
Okay.
The other ones that you mentioned.
But I I think definitely that's one, they've, Cindy, you can probably speak to this, they have been approached, and they say they're considering it as just the legal issue around whether it's considered a healthcare facility there.
To the time where we're going to go around, everybody has more than one. You'll get another turn, I promise you. Councillor Elliott.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a mild response to the question that Mr. Hempel asked of me and my questions. Is that okay?
Questions?
Yes, my response to the other question is not one of my questions. So the Cathet Regional Hospital Board offered at a very good price, the lease of the lands and the existing building that McLot is in. So that's been their contribution to date. They're not permitted to fund facilities that are not a recognized health facility, and so there is some pursuit as to trying to figure out how that happens for McLot to determine if they are allowed to fund there or not. The question about whether they would fund if they are allowed to, it hasn't been addressed at that board level yet. So I hope that helps a little bit. And the 150 that you are recommending is what portion of the total that they are seeking to finish their project? And then also, can you just give us an update as to what we've already contributed on that project?
Yeah, the overage that they're seeking help with is 564,000. So I guess basically a quarter. I don't know, my math's not that good. Yeah. So and then just going back to big picture, it was, you know, in terms of overages, it was probably inevitable, giving given the age of the building and the condition of the building, and certainly council's aware of big projects, you start getting into it, and then all of a sudden, the budget keeps going up there. So they've been pretty strict on that, but that's that's what they ended up with there. So but like I say, it's it's council can say, listen, we've done enough. But of course, our board's always looking for is there a way to to help them out?
So the other part of that recommendation says, subject to other funding agencies, would it be fair to not approve it at this point in time and just leave it on the books until those other funding agencies became available so that we would have a better idea of what it is they actually need?
Yeah, that's essentially what we're offering up is subject to somebody else covering the rest of the overage. And it'll probably be multiple people. So if that doesn't come forward, I don't think we're giving them their 150 there. And, you know, there is other options. I mean, they could, they could borrow money, whatever.
Pilar Palm.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to say things before I ask Mike. So we heard from Mr. Hempel today that there is substantial amount of funding in the reserves of our Community Forest Board. We have also heard that the interest alone on the money in those reserves just about cover this fall's endorsements from our Community Forest Board in terms of cost. And knowing the history that these volunteers have brought to our community, they serve us such a variety. I just go four items on today's list. Our music academy founded by Don James, called the James Hall when I first came to town. At that time, a music teacher.
Questions?
Councillor Palm, can you get to questions, please?
We've got friends at Cathet helping vulnerable students. We've got fine arts being helped out in our community. We've got long boiling, helping seniors stay healthy. We could just keep going down the list. What they do in our community is beyond belief, that I've witnessed here for 16-plus years and $32 million later. So my question is simple. Mr. Hempel, in your estimation, where would the city and this community be without our community forest?
That's a tough question. Definitely, I mean, by definition, the fund allows us to do a lot of projects in the community, which wouldn't otherwise been able to take place there. So I know you can always rationalize not investing, but the complex is a good idea. You can't just say, we're going to cut costs and and let it run down. It's the biggest capital exit, biggest capital asset, needs to be invested, needs to increase the use in it, is not going to be able to be replaced there. So it's things like that. And and for us, more so, we really, the community groups in in Powell River, that's what makes a community. And that's probably where we get them being volunteers ourselves, probably where we get the most appreciation out of the grant process there.
A couple of pending ones they bring to the table, bring forward. So I wholly support in our discussions going forward, just to let staff and everybody in the community know, I support your list entirely. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Alameda, questions?
Not at the moment, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Isaacson.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Hempel and Mr. Lang. The the healthcare auxiliary renovation, I'm wondering if there are existing grants that they've been able to access or other funding sources? And you mentioned they don't like to borrow money, so that means that there's no debt on the current, the the building that they purchased. So if you could just explain a little bit more about funding sources that they've got available to them?
Yeah, I'd be careful about sort of going on in depth about their finances, but they are old school. They and all their resources have been going into the community, and they've been leasing for years. And they're basically asking ourselves, maybe we should own our own building so that that part of the asset keeps increasing there. So that's the the basis behind it there. I can't say for sure, but I believe they tried to do it without incurring debt, which is a killer, of course, for nonprofits, sir.
The question was about other funding sources? Like have they, is it, are they only seeking money from the community foundation, or are there other funding sources?
I don't know that. Yeah. And then, I mean, their source of income, as you know, is from the economy shop. It's pretty amazing when you think about what they're able to do there. Yeah, I mean, those types of questions, I could go back to their chair and ask them about that. But they, as you know, they're they're basically right in the middle of trying to renovate and get open there. They've done a lot of, I mean, there's an urban renewal part of this, too. I'm sure the neighbors there are pretty appreciative that they've already cleaned up around the building there.
With regard to the roof of the music academy, apparently, they were hoping to get get away until 2028. And but my understanding is that that has deteriorated to the point where it's become a crisis now. Is that true?
Yeah, well, they applied what they thought was early. We encouraged that, indicating that it didn't need to be done now, but flagging that, hey, we're going to want a grant. And so after last year, they had it assessed, and there's more urgency, obviously, big projects, so it's not something you can do overnight. There's only one qualified company in Powell River that does that scale, a torch on roof. And they've been in discussions with School District 47 just to get their expertise in terms of when they should make a move to replace it. So they've done that part of it. But yeah, they've upped the schedule considerably there, because like I said, they talked to us. I can't even remember when they first talked to us there. And we said, well, you know, it's not, it's not a project that you need right now, so we're not going to provide a grant for something that might be a couple of years from now.
I've never known you not to have a question.
I have a question. I'm trying, because you're going to limit my questions, I'm trying to figure out which question I want to ask. So I guess what I want to ask is for the auxiliary renos, is that number 100% of what they need to do their work?
No, not, not even close.
Okay, so do we know what percentage they are asking us for?
Well, if you think about buying a building for 1.6 million.
No, I mean, the renovation.
Oh, the renovation, yeah. So there's components that we told them we weren't all that keen about, and they've been taking, I can give you an exact number, but I don't have the file with me. But yeah, there's components that are, we would consider not really something we'd like paving, they want to pave the backyard. Well, we said, probably not the way to go forward in this grant there. They had, of course, when you get into a building and start working with contractors, they say, well, you should replace this with a heat pump system and stuff like that. So some of the stuff that's nice to do there, if they're going to do it, they're going to do it themselves there. Ours are, the ones we're funding are really to get them up and running in the building there. Now, one of the surprises they got was a large cost that came as a result of the building permit process, which is upgrading to earthquake standards there. So that was, that was a big cost that came from the city. So that's probably the single biggest cost.
You mean like seismic standards for the building? Is that what you mean?
Yes, I think so. I'm not an engineer.
Thank you.
Pilar Palm, have any questions?
No further questions, Chair.
Pilar Alameda.
Thank you, Chair. I was curious with regards to the Lang Bay Hall grant. I'm no heating and cooling expert, but I think does BC Hydro offer, I feel like I've seen ads all the time for Hydro offering upgrades for heat pumps or whatever. I know you mentioned the federal government has maybe changed some of those things as well, but is that something available for, or is that considered a commercial facility and the grant's more for residential or?
No, ironically, nonprofits, it's you almost have to register as a business to be accessed, but they they, those are ones that have dried up right now. Now, one of the things we, and by the way, if if we need to add language or think we need to add language to to the grant, or as a result of anything that comes up, we could quickly approve that with staff. So if we think they, even though they're not available, and I've said that, if we think they should apply anyway, that's an easy thing to deal with in terms of the the process before you distribute money. And these groups, they're they're happy to get anything. So if we say that's what we want, I guarantee you, they'll provide it quickly.
Yeah, actually, I have two more quick questions. I have to admit, I did not read the entire Dropbox, all the files. So some of these are probably answered there, but this is probably a quicker way to get to the real meat. One is about the central farmer's market, the the money for that, I mean, these are not big, it's not a big grant. But is it, it's, my understanding is it's basically to be for portable accommodation to for booths, et cetera. Is that true?
I didn't do follow up on that one. We have the applications. It's one of, and we have such a volume of follow up notes, but I can go away and get that if it, if you feel it's a question. It's a project that was supported by city staff, obviously, because it's city infrastructure there. So anything in our notes here?
Personally supported as well, so that.
Yeah. And it is, I mean, that's, we we basically, it's capital oriented, so it must have been something they're building or purchasing there, so.
The other one is the Sunshine Music Festival.
Yep.
Lighting upgrades. I volunteer down there pretty much every festival and wasn't really aware of lighting insufficiencies, but lighting can always be improved, no question about it. However, that kind of gear is usually fairly delicate, and I could appreciate it not being kept there over, you know, over the season, the suggestion from our staffs to for it to be available to any other community events as well. However, I'm also, having worked in studios in distant past, I'm also aware that that kind of equipment is, it's fragile as well. So storage and setting up and and tearing down is, you know, often a cause of damage. So does that, is that advisable in the case of this?
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, their trigger is the Sunshine Coast Music Festival, which is three days or whatever. And then we said, we're, we would do this as a shared resource there, so. And where it's housed, we're not that worried about it, whether the city suggested it could be here. So we want it to be used for other events and that. Yeah, there's, I bet you there is a concern about it sitting in a warehouse and something gets dropped on it or whatever. But there's usually one person that really tracks where they are and that. So if they had a clubhouse or something like that, they don't. It's like a, it's like one event out of many. So we would like it available to a lot of people in the community there. There is a lot of grants we do that way. It's with the recognition that this is a community asset, not theirs to own and tell people to back off, so.
Thank you. Like the stage down there.
Pilar Elliott, any more questions?
Just one. So the the Willingdon Beach Market, they want to build stuff to use there. What was their plan for storage or where would these pieces sit when they're not using them?
Christ, you're supposed to know this stuff. We would have to, we would have to look at the, go through the application there. I mean, I'm really familiar with the ones I did follow up on, and we got a mountain of notes that even by tomorrow. I, I mean, I'm really familiar with the ones I did follow up on and we got a mountain of notes that even by tomorrow, I could say, here's my, I could, I could email you if you want me to do that.
Well, my concern is that it's a, it's a public space.
Yep.
And the intention, I think, is to build like market kiosks or something. And then, uh, if the market kiosks aren't stored in a, you know, when they're not using them in a way that's going to protect them from damage or vandalism or what have you, it may be a wasted investment is kind of what I'm worried about. And so, um, safe storage of the, the market's kiosks when they're not in use is a factor to whether it's worth investing in. So that's why I'm making the question.
Yeah. So there's, uh, concrete pads. Oh, the bench, no, that's the bench. This is the, uh, the garden down at Willingdon Beach.
That was the Willingdon Creek benches for the facility. Yeah, that's a different one.
Sure. If you got a second question, then I'll come back. Chris, while Chris does research.
You can answer whenever. I just, I, I think it's, um, worth making sure our investments are not going into infrastructure that's going to just be no good in a year or two, right?
Yeah, I totally agree. And, uh, um, there's examples, uh, with, uh, nonprofits where, uh, uh, maybe the funding dries up and then next thing you know, uh, um, it's going by the, the, so we do look for understanding the sustainability of investing in these things. Um, so, um, for instance, uh, trying to give a good example here, but we, we've had ones where it looks like things are falling into disrepair. And, uh, so you're sort of going, well, yeah, there's a lot of enthusiasm to build it, but then you didn't maintain it, right? So, um, we, we keep track of that, by the way.
Yeah. So the way the current farmer's market works, their, their kiosk things, they stay in place. But because they're talking about Willing Beach, which is a public beach and used for various different things, they're not going to be able to stay in place. So that, that triggers the question of, well, what, what are they going to do?
Yeah.
With that.
Now, like I say, this is one staff was well aware of and supports. So I.
Well, I support the market and.
Yeah, no, but in terms of them.
Question of investing the money into these kiosks, it matters how they plan to manage them once they have them.
Yeah. How are you doing there?
And you could, uh, yeah, they're also starting right away. So they, they obviously haven't built them yet. They're starting without them. Is that correct?
Pardon?
They must be starting without them because they don't have them yet and they're.
Yeah, I don't know what their schedule is. I saw it in the paper that they were, uh, advertising that this was going to happen there. So. Tents and sandbags. So presumably tents that can be folded up and, um, they're not permanent structures. They're infrastructure to facilitate the market itself.
Okay. So do you want to do $12,000 in tents and sandbags?
And tables.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for the board, for the Community Forest Board? I don't see any other hands. So thank you for that very thorough report. What we'll be doing next, uh, Mr. Ampel and the board. Thank, thank all of you for being here. And even the board members who haven't got up and spoken, because I know you've all put a lot of work into going through and vetting these applications and making a representation to council.
Yeah. And thank you to council. And, uh, like I say, if, if you think of anything you want an answer to, just, uh, phone us or text us and, um, it's, uh, we're pretty open to that interaction. Thanks.
The, the decision-making process, just so everybody in the room knows what's going to happen next. As we are going to have a report from city staff about their suggestions about community forest grants. That has recommendations in it and council will make those, the committee, the whole, which is what we are, will make recommendations on those. Then those recommendations will go to a future council meeting for final approval. But right now, council has been at this since two o'clock. Last report was a little bit over an hour, almost an hour and a half in length. I'm going to suggest that we take a 10-minute break so council can refresh themselves and we can hear from city staff on their recommendation, because I'm sure it's not going to be a five-minute report. He's good with that. So we'll take 10 minutes and we'll be back together to discuss item 10 dot two. A whole pile of chocolates at home. A whole pile of chocolates at home. My birthday the other day. Yeah. You get a visual. So you, yeah. You're searching. So that would come. Interesting. One. I can mark it. I'm. Working as well. Anyway. Place doesn't work. They don't have. They're putting up signs. I don't know. He's, he's, he's the front and his dad bought it. Some of the history is. I stand by that. And is he coming in tonight? Interesting. Well, he's hired by the. Write it for the. But he didn't write them. No, no. Didn't. Yeah. Have a. Give me a call and, and I'm at the old ball. Plans for holidays. There and. Get the cookies. Complimentary. I agree. Five, two, five hours. We could, uh, maybe get some of our council members to think about coming back. Get all the council members here. They can criticize me for letting the break run through. Member. Moving along on our journey today, we are. Two. This one. All River Community Forest. Perhaps. Up with our. Hope you could hear me because I didn't have the microphone in place.
Thank you, Chair. Um, as the committee just heard, the, uh, P R C F board grant application list totaled a little over $1.2 million. However, only 425,00314 was budgeted to award to NPOs in the City of Powell River 2025 to 2029 financial plan. Accordingly, there's a grant shortlist, uh, grant shortfall, sorry, of $758,226. So this is above the approved budget amount. Um, there is a staff report that provides the rationale for the staff recommendation for each of the applications. And we have, uh, Ms. Cuthbertson to, to speak to that, as well as Ms. Denniston is also available to speak to the budget, um, budgeted amount itself, as well as the individual amounts. I can have perhaps Ms. Cuthbertson briefly highlight the, uh, recommendations in the report.
Does Dennison want to go through and highlight the report or discuss the report? Who, who's going to do that?
Now, through the chair, um, Ms. Ms. Cuthbertson, unless you want to jump in, I think your piece really was, uh, very much covered with, uh, the Community Forest Board talking about different grants. So would you like to add anything to that before I jump into the financial piece?
Uh, through the chair, thank you very much. I, um, I'm happy and I'm here to answer any questions that you have in relation to the comments made by staff, uh, on the highlighted, um, projects. Um, however, I think at this stage it would be beneficial to start with the financial, um, outline, given some of the questions asked earlier on.
Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, through the chair, uh, for background, the Community Forest is a fully city-owned corporation. Um, and that means that the city taxpayers fully own this corporation. And, um, as outlined by Mr. Brown, the request on the table is about $800,000 more in funding from the Community Forest Reserve Fund than what was budgeted for. The big question, uh, that seems to be discussed is, do we have those funds? There's, the reserve has a big balance. Why does it cost the taxpayers to access those funds? Does the city not have free money to give away? And the simple answer to that question is no. Uh, the city does not have free money to give away. Though if the city wanted to increase property taxes further, it could give away more of the money in the Community Forest Reserve Fund. So it is a choice, it is an option, and there is a tax implication, as we've talked about through the budgeting process, as council's well aware and spoke about last week. Um, it can be a difficult concept to wrap your head around, especially when you see such big numbers in a reserve. How could there possibly not be money available to give away without an impact to the taxpayers? And the reason there isn't is because the needs for the city-owned community amenity capital costs are much higher than what is saved in the reserve. And I'm talking about the needs in the next five to seven years. So when we think about city-owned community amenity, we're thinking about the recreation complex, the track, the seawall, the parks. And there's many other examples. So we think about all this infrastructure and, you know, the complex, which is a big piece of it, was built when the mill paid about 70% of that. And now we're going into a year next year where the mill might be a very small percentage of the tax base at a time when it's time to replace this infrastructure. So while it was wonderful when it was built to be so fully funded by the mill tax, um, the shift and the decrease in the mill taxes. the shift and the decrease in the mill taxes has really shifted that burdens to residents and businesses mainly. So not enough has been saved over the last decades. And so there's something called a funding gap for all of the capital for the city and specifically around community amenities. And so, okay, why for things like the recreation complex, is there a bigger funding gap than sewer or water, for example? Thinking about sewer and water, there are other ways to raise money other than property taxes to pay for that infrastructure. So through user fees and parcel taxes, the city is able to raise money for the capital costs for those services. But what about all these community amenities, which only city taxpayers pay the capital for? So the region has access to it. It's 100% the bill of a city taxpayer for the capital costs associated with rec center, the track, and so on. And so why is that? And it mainly comes down to you're limited with community amenities such as these on how to fund the capital. So user fees are a great way to help fund a service. We do have user fees, field user fees for the fields. And of course, when you go to the recreation center, you do pay fees, but they don't even come close to covering the operating costs. I think it's estimated that city taxpayers subsidize about three to four million dollars of the operating costs of the rec center a year and 100% of the capital. Though user fees are a little bit of a piece for us to recoup some money, but none of it goes to capital. So then we go to how else can we fund this capital, which has aged out? As we all know, it was built in the boom of this town, and now it is requiring a lot of capital money, which hasn't been saved. So what else can be done? Another great thing is project grants from the federal and provincial governments, and the city has been successful in securing some of that, which is fantastic. But those aren't guaranteed, and we've also been turned down a lot of them. So if not user fees, if not project grants, capital reserves could fund the complex. So the infrastructure reserve, that does the buildings. And, you know, could we not draw from that per se, the recreation? Or the Sewell, what have you. It is underfunded. It's below a million dollars, and it has to fund all the city buildings. So we talked about the fire hall and city hall and the yard. Draw examples of buildings which are outdated. They're beyond their useful life, and we are working to increase taxes so that we can replace these buildings. As you know, the fire hall, we secured seven and a half million dollars for debt, and the design came in at 20 million. So we're back to the drawing board. So the infrastructure reserve has money, not even enough for the other buildings, such as the fire hall or the RCP building also. So then we go down the list. How do we fund all these wonderful community services that are available to everyone? The Community Forest Reserve. And so that has been a fantastic, unique source of revenue for the city, really fantastic work done by the Community Forest to earn profits. And those are city money, and some of that money has gone to nonprofits, and some of it has gone to city capital projects for community amenities. But it's not enough. It's not enough. The rec center in 2021 was estimated to need $25 million in 2021 to extend its useful life about 25 years. And so council gave direction for full service, which means full replacement, and to fully fund that rehab project. One of the projects in that rehab plan was 1.5 million for the aquatic center roof. It is now 6.5 million. So since that plan was estimated on probably 2019, 2020 estimates, we've talked about how the construction industry has had double-digit inflation year over year, which has left so many municipalities absolutely stunned at how much that lowers the, how far the reserves will stretch. So if the Community Forest Reserve Fund had enough for all the capital needs in the short, in the short term that will be needed, you know, then you could give that excess away to nonprofits without impacting city taxes. But the reality and of the cost and the age and the lack of other savings and other ways to fund is that the property taxes have to fund community amenity capital. And so that's where we get into the why are property taxes impacted when it looks like the money's there? Well, our asset management approach and our asset management, asset plans that are approved online, available for the public. We're looking at funding all of the replacements. So we don't just look at the funds that are within the city. We look at all the city-owned funds. So the Community Forest is 100% owned by the city. So it isn't just factoring in the dividends. It's factoring in the consolidated earnings. So if you look at the financial statements for the city, it consolidates all the earnings of the Community Forest. So even when the funds aren't yet dividend to the city, when we're looking at how much we have to raise in taxes to keep the community amenities going, we're looking at all of that fund as being available. So the money in the corporation is the city's and the money cities, Community Forest Reserve is the city's. So whether it has come across the line as a dividend or not, as far as our long-term funding plan, that's holistically what we're looking at. And so that's essentially what it comes down to. It all boils down to there's not enough money in the Community Forest Reserve for the capital needs that are identified in the asset management plan. And so property tax would then subsidize those capital costs for the city-owned community infrastructure. So what would that look like? So can council give more? The report talks about, you know, 2025, we have levied the taxes and we increased it by about that half a million so that more money could be, this money could be given away to nonprofits. And at this point in the process, it councils considering the, the board's recommendation. It would be quite risky because it would require an increase to 2026 property taxes, which is something that is, you know, borrowing from future funds that you haven't levied, especially when next year we talk about the risk of the mill coming out of major industry and the big tax increase that that will see. So if 800,000 more of future taxes, what council is looking to access, it would be about a 4.6% further increase to property taxes. So starting 2026 at about 8.3%. And if the mills are moved from major industry, you can add, you know, 10 to 20% on that. So that's sort of the, the tax implication of of the, the consideration that council has at hand, because so many good projects externally that I think council is, is looking at supporting. So that's the financial implication, and that is why there's a tax impact of that. So there were questions on the dividend. And so how that worked is the Community Forest gave estimates. They hold all that financial information. And on March 3rd, I see, you know, in writing from the Community Forest, 600,000 in dividend. So we went forward with that. And the financial plan was adopted March 27th. And then fast forward to year end, and our auditors were auditing that work and kind of noted, oh, that 600,000, you know, let's look that over as that calculated in accordance with the articles. And they had some feedback that it wasn't. So that got updated early May, so well after the financial plan had been adopted. But as I mentioned, the dividend, you know, if the earnings that the Community Forest earns through the Articles of Incorporation, they are required to give it as a dividend this year or next year. So from a long-term financial planning process, we're looking at the full earnings in that corporation and then trying our best to forecast. So there still would have been a tax impact. It wouldn't have changed the fact that there would have been a tax impact in 2025. So I think I've covered, you know, I've covered a lot around asset management and funding strategies, dividend calculations, and, you know, the, the balance that is tax increases versus giving grants externally. Though I know that it is a lot of information to digest, I will say that this has been discussed throughout the whole budget process, and the final budget report has links to all the budget reports. So should someone want more information on this, it is covered in that process. But I will, I will thank you so much for your time to the Community Forest Board and to council. And unless any of my colleagues have anything more to add, I can open the floor to questions.
Just a hold on council. So Ms. Dennison suggested that if there's any other staff members that want to comment on their report, they could do that. And anybody have any comment? I don't see anybody. Did you want to make any comments on the recommendation that's in the report that we have, Ms. Dennison?
Through the chair. I don't have further comments on the recommendation. It is a difficult decision to allocate the, you know, roughly $430,000 at hand. No further recommendation beyond what was put forward. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to do what I've been doing so far and rotate around the council table because I'm sure there will very likely be many questions. So Counselor Palm, would you like to go first this time, just to things up?
Sure, why not, Chair? Thank you. So Ms. Dennison. I'm kind of perplexed on where we are at the moment, and I think our Community Forest Board is a little perplexed, looking at their faces in the audience. And I have a couple of specific questions. First of all, knowing that council passed a motion that basically rescinded the 10%, 90% split between the city and nonprofits and went back to basically a status quo. Can you please explain how we got to the number 425,000 for the fall grants to nonprofit?
Through the chair, there is no status quo. There's no standard percent that's ever been applied to determine how much to give away. So we'll start with that. Secondly, Community Forest on March 3rd reconfirmed in writing that the estimated dividend was 600,000. Council direction was to use 10% of a rolling three-year average as a proxy to determine how much money to give away to nonprofits in the budget. And so that 600,000 plus the two big years before multiplied by 10% is how we arrived at that amount. Then, like I said, if you fast forward into May, well after the property tax and financial plan are adopted, the dividend was changed. Now, like we talked about, it would have had a, a tax impact. So should council have wanted to give away more, knowing more would have been given this year, it would have had a property tax impact for 2025.
Another question, Counselor Palm?
I have one more question. That is, since we passed a motion to go back to status quo and knowing that the status quo from the past long duration of grants has been roughly an average of 60, 40 split, 40 going to nonprofits, 60 to the city. I'm still having problems with how we got to the 425. When in the past, knowing we have monies in reserve, we have always endorsed Community Forest recommendations, and they have a good idea of how much money is in those reserves. So the numbers just don't add up for me. Also knowing, also knowing that in terms of the aquatic roof that has gone from to 6.5, I know that in the reserves, we've allocated through the Community Forest somewhere around $9 million already where projects have not been done and completed at the complex.
Up through the chair, there was no motion for status quo. The motion was Powell River Community Forest Grants to Nonprofit Organizations Be Limited to 10% of a Three-Year Rolling Average of the Powell River Community Forest yearly dividends. That was how the amount was arrived at this year. And that's there, there, there is no status quo. Staff will not be able to follow.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll wait till the second round and bring up the motion that I'm referring to in the second round. Thank you.
Counselor Elliott, any questions?
Thank you, Chair. My first question has to do, just to confirm the 40,000 for the Townsite Mall bus station little building shelters. It's already included in the approved budget and therefore would not need to be addressed today. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay. The other question I have is the the, the reserve funds. Council can at any time allocate funds from a reserve fund if they aren't already allocated to something else. And if they are, they could change that allocation within the budget. That's within the purview of council. Is that correct?
Through the chair, could you define what committed would mean? So if, if that full reserve is committed in the council's asset management plan as being needed, would that be committed? Would staff would need direction to change service levels, I would suppose, and identify, you know, which pieces of the, likely the complex or other community amenities would not go forward with rehabilitation?
So money that is generally set aside because we feel we need to put them in a project in the future, but we don't have definition around that is not really committed, is it? It's, it's part of this overall picture you're talking about. The reserve itself, wherever it sits, if, if council chooses to allocate something and then change the five-year plan to reflect that new allocation, that's, that's something we can do. If, if the funds are over allocated, so there, there's nothing specific for some of it. Some of it is the, the overall concept that we're going to need to spend it because we have assets that need work done to them. But we haven't identified a specific project yet, so it isn't committed yet because it can't be at that stage. It needs a project first. Our bylaw for that reserve indicates that we can't actually spend it without having a process of, of communication. And we've currently set up a process for communicating, and, and a lot of the results for that have not played out just yet. So my question, I guess, that's that we could allocate from that reserve and ask for the five-year plan to be updated to reflect that allocation over and above what's in, in the budget at this time. That's within our purview. Is that correct?
Through the chair, it is correct. It would need to be identified how to fund that. So property tax would need to be identified as increasing, or service levels would need to be identified as decreasing, and staff could could approve the borrowing of future property tax now to fund nonprofits now.
We'll get, we'll get another chance in the next go-round, Counselor Elliott. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question this term, and I think the recommendation in the report is that council fund projects according to Appendix D Scenario A. And when I read that, it has a total available contribution of 400 some thousand dollars and a grant app, or approval fund of about 200 and some thousand dollars. I think, want to make sure that's the recommendation you're making.
Through the chair, I don't know if Ms. Cuthbertson wants to add anything here. I think that staff recommendation was to work within the budget and the allocated council's budget.
Through the chair to counsel of doubt. Yes, that would be staff's recommendation. I will note that the way that staff have presented the information does leave a funding available within that 425,000 dollars for fall grants to be considered as well. However, if it is council's wish to rather fund projects all in the spring and leave no money for the fall or less money for the fall, then that would be something for council to consider as part of that recommendation.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was right about staff's recommendation is that this. Okay, I just wanna make sure I was right about staff's recommendation is that the spring grants and and I've expanded my screen so I can read it with my reading glasses on of 225,448.38 to community nonprofits. And a total, if we provide Community Forest grants in the fall, of 425,314,000. Counselor Southcott, do you have any questions?
So there, there's a one big question in my mind. And I appreciate CFO and staff giving us a very high-level perspective of what essentially is, as I see it, is a crisis in our community and in our society. And that's affordability. And whether it's individual or community, like we're considering right now, the context. It's how to pay for what we've got, how to sustain ourselves. The fundamental sustainability question. And over the years, looking at that, for me, the elephant for me is really the recreation complex, which is a regional resource and has essentially from both a capital and an operational standpoint, been funded to the great extent by city taxpayers. The question I'd like to ask is if we, if city taxpayers contributions to that piece of infrastructure were made equivalent to what regional contributors contribute, what operations of the rec complex would look like? Because that question's been in the back of my mind for quite a while. But I have a suspicion what it would look like even from an operational standpoint, let alone a capital standpoint. But we have not even started to really talk about this, even though there's been just a beginning conversation at the regional board level that excludes the municipal directors' service review. So my question is, is that not, is the recreation complex and its giant capital needs, let alone opportunities? Because if we don't use some of this money, we're not gonna, I would imagine we're gonna lose the federal grant that that was committed to the heat exchange system between the ice and the the domestic hot water, which includes the pools. The question is, if is not the recreation complex really the very largest piece and possibly even more than 50% of the infrastructure which you could, I don't wanna call it a deficit, but the infrastructure expend, expended or expected expenditures required over in the foreseeable future?
Through the chair, it is correct that the recreation complex is the largest, has the largest funding deficit from a capital perspective for the city.
Counselor Isaacson, do you have any questions?
I do have questions. So following up on Counselor Palm's question, you mentioned the, the motion we made on February 27 about the 10% of a three-year rolling average. That was a change from a previous motion that was 10% of, 10% to a yearly dividend up to 250,000. And then, March 20. And so I, I want you to see if I've got my memory correct. March 20, I'm not, I don't remember what readings we were at that day, but we were at a point of having to start our readings or finish our readings on the financial plan. And when we made that motion to use the same processes 2023 and 22, the question, there was a question of, and staff were looking for a number, a number to be in the motion. I do remember that. And there wasn't a number in this motion. They wanted, they wanted direction from council. And so the question was, and I think Counselor Southcott asked it, if we don't put a number in here, what number will be used? And at that point, that's when you shared it was the 400 and something thousand dollars. The, the previous number that we, that had come up in December was something like was much lower. It was like 100. It was, it was very low. And so going up to 400 and something was an increase because of that anticipated dividend based on your current understanding of 600,000. So that's my memory of the process and how the, the interpretation of of status quo based on council direction was. And I'm wondering if you can correct my memory or if, if, if it went that way or if it went slightly different? Through the chair to staff, yeah.
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Isaacson. That was a good refresher for me, and you are 100% correct. There was a motion that, you know, the dividend moved and seconded that 25 Community Forest dividend and contributions to the city and nonprofits be determined according to the same process as 2023 and 2022. And so staff said, we really need a number for the budget. We can't build budgets on on that because there, there has been no consistent amount that, you know, they gave a different percentage and amount in 2022 than 2023. It wasn't as though, you know, we're giving 500,000 every year, and that would be clear. So we let, you know, let council know that. And as you said, Counselor Southcott noted, if we vote in favor of this, my assumption is that we will be doing the 10% of the prior three-year rolling average. And I confirmed that that would be my understanding of the discussion. Had we not, and had we applied the year-to-date average of percentage given away to community nonprofits, it would have been a lower number. It would have been 240,000. But the sentiment from council was that it, they wanted it to be higher than what was granted in prior years, given that process. So that is, was the conversation that was had around, around that topic. And then in the final report for the three years, for the, for the first three readings of the financial plan, on page six, I believe, there is a summary of all the grants to the nonprofits, and we've got that 425 in there for NPOs, just to really make sure the staff got it correct. So that was in, I think it was in all the reports subsequent to that discussion.
Thank you. And the second question is more specific and maybe for, through the chair to Ms. Cuthbertson. My understanding is the, the, the application from the market on Willington Beach is related to tents. And I'm curious about kind of that same model approach based on the suggestion from the kind of the, the issue with lighting and the, the Sunshine Music Fest of an asset that could be used more broadly than just by one organization and whether or not the intention with the, the tents for the community market, was it for it to be a community asset or is there a plan to share? I'm wondering about that recommendation, both from Community Forest and yourself.
Through the chair to Counselor Isaacson, thank you. The the application itself does not speak to it being a community asset. However, if that was a condition that council wished to impose on in respect of that grant, then that would be council's prerogative. I understand that the application is intended to make the market accessible to smaller vendors and to be used year-on-year throughout the summer. If there is a need for them to be used outside of the summer seasons for any markets or other events in the winter, then I'm sure a conversation with the organizers would be would be willingly had and well-supported.
Thank you. Those are my two questions for this time.
Counselor Alameda?
Thank you, Chair. I will follow up on Counselor Isaacson's question with the central market scheduled to open up in about 11 days. And we haven't approved these grants yet. And I know Community Forest typically does not support grants that have already been started. It seems like the farmer's market would need these materials to start up next week. And the math of the timeline doesn't seem to work out. So are you aware by chance of what their plan is in the meantime? Or did they have a plan outside of this grant if it didn't work out?
Through the chair to Counselor Alameda. We would typically rely on the Community Forest Board to do those follow-ups and ensure that needs would be met. I know that at the time of submitting the application, they, this wasn't something that had started yet, and so would have met the criteria on that basis. I will also note that their expenses were well above the required or the ask from Community Forest. And so it may be a matter of them pivoting on some other costs at this stage to make it work. But again, would rely on some follow-ups from the board on that project.
Thank you. And to the CFO, I am not able to pull up previous years, but I'm trying to just get a better understanding. Counselor Isaacson already covered the question regarding the 40-60% that I was gonna clear up. But I think, I guess, the other question that might be out there is the, the $600,000 number. So if, can you please clarify, I guess, in the typical budgeting process from year to year, there is a number that is provided by the Community Forest that you use in your budget when, when preparing the budgets for the year. And so this year, that number was 600. In past years, it's been over a million or 2 million, whatever that number might be. But if I, if I understand correctly, normally by the end of the calendar year, you kind of have a rough idea of what that number is to use in the budget for the following year. Is that, and then the percentage, you know, in the past was 40-60% or whatever, but that percentage is roughly estimated based off that number?
Through the chair to Counselor Alameda, that is correct. We would have the dividend estimate January, generally in January and February. And so, you know, at the latest in February. But yeah, in March, we are still getting the $600,000 estimate this year. But generally, it's, it's earlier than that, and it, and it is the same number in the financial statements as, as what was estimated. So that was not the case this year. But, but like I said, there a way around a property tax impact of, of increasing the amount of money that goes out the door.
Thank you. Counselor Palm, any more questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm gonna just concentrate on the big picture here and not get into the nitty-gritty of this and that. So my first question refers to what Counselor Isaacson referred to in terms of the motion that we passed on March 20, 2025. That motion, I'm gonna read the first part because it's pretty simple. And there seems to be some misunderstanding what this part of the motion represents. It reads, moved and seconded that the 2025 Community Forest dividend and contributions to city projects and nonprofits be determined according to the same process that was used in 2023 and 2022 with participation of the Community Forest Working Group, which has met and and not discussed in length at this time, what that actually means and come to any resolution. So when that motion was passed in this council chamber, I have a feeling that the Community Forest Board and the public was under the impression that that meant we were going back to the status quo of those years of roughly a 40-60 split between the city and nonprofits. So why is that not reflected in what we're, and the numbers we're getting today?
Through the chair, I think Counselor Southcott and Counselor Isaacson have touched on that already.
So the other thing that comes to mind for me is, since we're supposed to be operating this in terms of the status quo of 2023 and 2022, during those years, when the Community Forest brought forward their recommendations that were endorsed for most part, and there was never any reference to tying Community Forest contributions to nonprofits to taxation, with all due respect, I'm saying this because that was the way we did business, with no mention of taxation implications. So can you explain what accounting processes changed in terms of to make this change in direction?
Through the chair, I don't think there was a change in accounting processes. I know that in the past couple of years, that link has been discussed in all the Community Forest reports and in the budget. I think in the past couple of years, maybe the difference is that the Community Forest has brought in some pretty significant dividends. And so maybe there's a bigger impact, and maybe that's why. But you know, the if there was a notion years ago, before I started a CFO, that money could be given away with a tax impact, it could have just been something that was, was not reported in a report. I can't speak to the years before. I can just speak to knowing the total cost that's required, the funds that we have, and the gap that is there. It can only be filled with property tax. So fortunately, I can only talk to that. It isn't complex math, but I get that the concept with all the different funding streams can, can be a lot. But the math itself is is just one of the costs exceeding the available funding. So additional funding needing to be sought and property tax being the only option to fill that gap.
Thank you.
Counselor Elliott, any further questions?
Thank you. I got a little bit curious about the Saturday farmer's market. Are we still running the Thursday market? And are they run by, like separately, or has it changed to Sat, the Thursday changed to Saturday? I guess I don't, I don't know a lot about whether these are different projects, the same project. And I wasn't sure if you were, if I heard you say that the tents would be there all summer, even though the, the the market is only on Saturdays. And so if I could, please ask, is there a model that we are aware of here at the city that is, Thursday's different than Saturday? And when we, if we decide to fund the tents, do they stay there for the whole summer? Or are they then packed up and brought in and out each time? And so what do we know about that?
Through the chair to Counselor Elliott. Apologies for any confusion on that basis. The intention is that the market is on a Saturday only and is packed up and reset up the following week. In relation to the Thursday night market, staff had council direction from last year, which directed staff to run or host the market in 2024 and to seek another organization in 2025 and beyond. Staff reached out to various organizations on that direction, and the Central Farmer's Market came forward as a weekly market on a seasonal, on a seasonal, seasonal basis. And it is their prerogative when they would seek to run the market and have chosen a Saturday rather than a Thursday.
Okay, thank you. I was curious about whether they were two different initiatives or not. So it's, it's the same initiative we've been doing in the past, and it's been changing to someone else operating it, which is great. And it's gonna be folded up every Saturday and put away somewhere.
Yes, and just through the chair to Counselor Elliott. It may not be operated in exactly the same way as the Thursday night market, and so maybe considered a different initiative since it won't be a night market and is being hosted differently. We don't assume control over how they wish to run the market.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions at this time. Thank you.
Good, Chair, thank you.
Thinking we're getting to the end of people's curiosity and questions and might be appropriate for somebody to make a motion of some kind, whether it's a recommendation or something else. Counselor Elliott?
I'll make a motion and then speak to it. I'll make a motion and then speak to it if that's okay. I recommend, or I move that the Committee of the Whole recommend to council that grants be approved from the Community Forest resources for up to a total of one million thirty-three thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. And direct staff to amend the five-year financial plan accordingly.
Before we get it, can I, can staff put that up on the screen so we can see the actual motion for future reference? Like what you plan to say, Counselor Elliott?
Yes, thank you. And I would speak to that.
Okay, and I just want to verify. This is Committee of the Whole, so we don't need a secondar, so we have a motion on the floor. And go ahead, Counselor Elliott.
Oh. We're missing the word. Oh, no, it's there. Okay, thank you. So that is the total recommended amount from the Community Forest Board minus the forty thousand that is already in our budget for the bus shelters and minus the one hundred and fifty thousand for the Mclot Together We Can. And my rationale for the Mclot one is that we currently have from the Community Forest already donated quite a lot of money. And I do know that other agencies are trying to figure out if they can contribute some, one of them being the Cathet Hospital District. And I would like to give them the opportunity to see if they can't come up with those monies. I'm hoping other funders can put some in since our Community Forest has already contributed quite a lot. I also think the province should also be kicking in and we've put in lots to, that they could use to match that with. And so I am making a motion to not fund the Mclot at this time. Not to say that we couldn't look at that application down the road if, if, if they really can't find anything else, but I don't want to be the first to put our hand up on that one. I, I think it's a good faith decision-making process to make a recommendation that is backed by the Community Forest Board and proceed with our conversations with the Community Forest around policy and use of funds and perhaps doing things differently in the future. Since those conversations haven't had time to come to resolution around doing things different, I think that is best for our council to accept the recommendation of our Community Forest Board. And I work hard at communicating over the next little while to see if we can bring the expenses of our rec center or what have you to the table in that conversation. Our, our recreational services is being reviewed at the Cathet Regional District. There's an agreement with the Cathet Regional District outstanding and not in place at this time. So there are a bunch of conversations that have to happen over there as well. And I want to be sure we are not presupposing the outcome of some of those conversations at this point in time. So I'm in favor of this motion.
Counselor Almeida.
Thank you, Chair. The dollar figure is slightly off, but that is not completely relevant in this case. I'm not going to be in favor of this motion primarily for the prime reason our CFO laid out. And I'm not prepared to start the year off with a potential, you know, six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollar increase to next year's budget plan before we even discuss the two thousand and twenty six budget. The CFO has laid out a clear reasoning back in March when we were voting on the financial plan. As was previously discussed today, there was first a motion to do ten percent. And then in March, it was to remove that ten percent and do what was done in previous years. And I remember when that vote came up, I said, this motion doesn't make sense because that previous year motion would make it forty to six, forty and sixty percent, which would have actually put our Community Forest grants at a total of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the year for nonprofits this year and sixty percent of that to the city. So we are already surpassing that as the CFO has put it at the four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar mark that's there. So I am not ready with an amendment yet, but I'm not in favor of this as it stands.
Deputy, sir, you wanted to say something?
CFO has her hand up.
Let the CFO enter the debate. Go ahead, Ms. Dennison.
Through the Chair, if I may just request for clarity for staff on the piece around the budget amendment, if it could be to amend the two thousand and twenty five five-year financial plan by increasing the two thousand and twenty six property taxes by six hundred and eight thousand and two hundred and twenty-six dollars, just to provide clarity for the budget amendment, which we will, as you know, bring forward later in the year.
Right now, the motion is in front of the council and amendments to the motion are going to have to come from council. Counselor Isaacson.
Uh, thank you. Similar to Counselor Almeida, I don't support this motion. I think, I think the, maybe the, the will or the intention of this motion is for the budget amendment to draw, to draw these funds from the Community Forest Reserve Fund. I'm suspecting that's what you meant.
To say reserve fund, not resources.
So either way, even if that was true, really ultimately what it means is less money in reserves generally for future rec complex capital project initiatives. And we would need to then tax for them at that time. And so when we approving this amount now passes the buck to taxpayers five years from now or whenever by distributing more money today. And I think back to the budgeting process, not this year, but two years ago, we went through really detailed deliberation, like line by line about opportunities to cut. It was not a particularly fun experience for council, but also for staff. Pretty demoralizing to, to go through that level of, of fine tooth comb. And it doesn't, for me, feel good to not also apply that high level of deliberation to, that we applied to city spending, also to our choices around community grants. Like we are in, as a community, but in, but also as a city, in tougher financial times than we have been in the past. I think we have had this wealth of an asset in this community for so many years and we still do, making really good investments in the community for the future. And things are a bit different now. And we, and so it makes sense that the Community Forest is making recommendations based on their understanding of the finances and the applications that they've come in. And now council, we need to take their recommendations and approach it from our perspective of all that we know of capital planning, the, the budget, as well as things in camera that the public would not be aware of. And so we have to apply that big picture thinking. And so that big picture thinking, knowing all the pieces, I would love to grant, to freely grant this amount to the recommendations, but I, I can't in good faith do that. You know, staff recommendations and council deliberations are really about that big picture. So staff are considering not only Community Forest reserves, but also risks and opportunities of the community, the city as a whole. And their, their recommendations are based on council motions and policy, their professional expertise. And in case of our CFO Mallory Dennison, her legal and fiduciary responsibilities that are unique to her under the community charter. And so, so to not weigh those recommendations very seriously. Granted, the decision is in our hands. She has passed that, in, in bringing this to council, has passed that, that responsibility and those risks onto us. But I, I take the recommendations very seriously. And so given the tighter financial situation that the city is in and given that the staff recommendations back in March were based on the communicated dividend of six hundred thousand dollars at that time, then I, there are recommendations on this list that I, I just cannot support. And I, I appreciate the, the regional district's process of deliberating line by line and, and going back and forth. And I usually wouldn't, I don't think the Community Forest process has had to do that in the past because of the richness that this community has had. And we're just not there anymore. And so as a council, I think it's really important with our duty of care for the city and its residences and its taxpayers to take these recommendations really seriously. Consider the recommendations for the Community Forest very seriously, as well as the recommendations from staff, and then make a decision based on those. And it does not feel, it feels good to give away money. It doesn't feel good to feel like we're taking it away. But that's the nature of our job, is to make unpopular decisions if we feel that they are in the best interest of the, the city and its residents. And so I can support this motion as it's written. And, and I would be more open to having a conversation that deliberated the recommendations, the specific projects at a little bit more in depth because I think there's wiggle room, but I can't, I can't support this as is. Thank you.
Counselor Palm.
Thank you, through Chair, appreciate it. So I just want to get the numbers right, first of all, on this recommendation thing. Counselor Elliott, I've got to ask you a quick question. You're asking to eliminate the Mclot fifty thousand?
Yep.
Plus the Friends of Cathat for another twenty for a total of a hundred and seventy.
Uh, no, the forty was for the Townsite Mall shelters and it's because staff has let us know that has already approved in the budget. So we don't need to approve it in this amount. No.
So your numbers are correct, right? Has anybody else done the numbers? The number on the screen, is it correct? Counselor Almeida?
No, it's not.
What should it be?
Based on my calculations, the number that Counselor Elliott was looking at was one million twenty-three thousand, six fifty-two and fifty-nine cents.
So I am going to vote in favor of this motion. And for the simple reason that we've heard from our Community Forest that there are ample funds in the reserve. The interest alone covers most of this expense. And knowing that we have nine million already set aside and not utilized in our complex and we're going to be advocating for another three million plus to go in that direction, I think our nonprofits deserve to carry on and carry on their good work, stretch those dollars further and make our community stronger. So I will be endorsing this recommendation. And lastly, hearing our CFO's recommendation to tie this to two thousand and twenty-six taxation, I certainly will not endorse that at this point until our working group has had further discussions with our Community Forest. Thank you, Chair.
Counselor Southcott.
Thank you, Chair. I got a question before, a question and a comment. The question is, how, what is the timeline? How, when do we need to make a decision on this as far as what we send to council? Is time of the essence here? I imagine we have to send something to council today, but is that, is that true?
Who are you asking?
I think I'm asking staff from a process standpoint, like. I can.
Counselor Southcott's question to staff was, is there a time limit or a, or a best before date when we have to make a recommendation to council?
Um, through, through the Chair, I've just, I don't know what the answer to that to the question is, but I can ask one of the staff, whether it's been done in the past. I know there's some granting dates that are more time sensitive than others, given the individual applicants. There's also the, the, the public awarding of, of the grants that, that has to be scheduled. So I think the more that goes into summer, that then it becomes problematic for some of the, some of the applicants there.
Thank you. That's good enough for me at the moment, if I may. Yeah, this is probably one of the most difficult positions I've found myself in. But I, like many, like others here, feel that we haven't had enough conversation. There hasn't been enough connection between the Community Forest Board and council directly. And the evidence of that for me is the apparent discrepancy in views between the Community Forest Board and the, our staff report. I have to respect this staff report regardless of whether we agree on the four twenty-five thousand or whatever other figure. But I can look back many years now and more than one C F, previous CFO who have talked about reserves. I can also look back at conversations about what we propose to do about the ultimate demise of our tax source from the mill. I also reflect on the past few days when I've had about three conversations about affordability and what people can do to afford their taxes. And that includes elderly people who cherish the complex. And I appreciate that we've, we haven't even hardly started the conversation about the complex. And I believe we intended to develop a reserve fund specifically for that. But since we didn't do that, it is amassed into general asset management accounting right now, if I'm not wrong. And that we, you know, we've had increasingly detailed reports about where we're headed in terms of asset management. But the complex is the one that's really in focus in terms of this conversation. And you know, when I look at the list, particularly on Appendix D Scenario A, clearly we have, you know, the top few items that are supported. And then there's others that add up to another nine hundred and fifty thousand suggested grants by the Community Forest Board that I, I can't find any of them to be not useful and of huge value from a social wealth standpoint, which I think is really the primary, it's the value system I am increasingly heading towards in our community. And what would we cut out? Fixing a roof? If fail to fix a roof, you condemn the building. I mean, just as an example, so I can't support this. I support the direction that Counselor Elliott's going in. But I cannot forget the longer-term perspective here and the shorter-term conversations I have had just over this past weekend with people who are panicking with an extra thousand bucks in their, their taxes, which fortunately there might just be some help for. Anyway, it needs to, I don't know if I could support only four twenty-five, but I can't support this basically on the principle of we have to think in, my belief, we have to think in the longest term. And the rec complex, as I've already mentioned, is the biggest elephant for me. And that isn't something that we've even really started to talk about except for around about, so. That's where I'm at right now.
I see your hand, Counselor Elliott. You've been on the list as a second time speaker for a while. And I'm on the list as a first time speaker. That will complete the circle. But first off, I support this resolution. Want to point out that the last motion that was made about what we should do with the Community Forest dividends and donations was one I made. And people have been ignoring the fact that I've suggested in that motion, and council passed that motion. We would set the dividend level and the expenditures to the city and the, and the nonprofits, the same process as we had in the previous two years. Everybody I've heard so far is ignoring the concept of the dividends. And the Community Forest Board, I think, has, has set the dividends in the past. Some of it, some of the money in the Community Forest Board's control has gone to reserves, some of it has gone to dividend over the years. That's a decision of the Community Forest Board that they can make in cooperation and consulting, consultation with the city. I don't think that happened this year, but there we are. People are expressing a desire to go through these donations to nonprofits, line by line. This motion doesn't preclude that from happening. If anybody has a motion about a particular grant that's included or excluded, they're quite welcome to make a motion to amend Counselor Elliott's motion to include or to exclude any line item in these donations that are recommended by the Community Forest. I know that they spent some time figuring out what they should recommend and what they shouldn't, and they've done, made some efforts to do it. And I think we can respect that. But at the end of the day, it's council's duty to make a decision. And we've been dithering around on that since December. And I think we need to make decisions pretty soon, because there's a lot of people in the community are waiting for us to do it. So I, I support this resolution. If there's, if people don't support it because there's one item that's included, or that they think should be not included, then they can make those amendments and we can go ahead and make a decision. Or we can, you know, turn this down and try to figure out what we're going to do next. But I support the resolution as it is. And I think when we look at the five-year financial plan, if we get to doing that, we can make all kinds of decisions about what we change. We are not restricted to one decision to increase taxes. We can make other decisions to do with the five-year financial plan. Counselor Elliott, you're the next one on the list.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm not adverse to having council change that number to reflect removing some other projects from the list, if that's their desire to put those forward. I'm just at a loss as to figure out what those would be. And so, it's kind of an opening number that I've put out there. And I'm hoping the rest of council can come to some sort of consensus around which ones we want to fund and which ones we would prefer to fund at a lower level, or whatever it is we want to do. And the, the method of our conversation to arrive at a, a proper number is, is somewhat dependent on somebody making motions for amendments or some such thing. And so, I had thought, one way about going about that would be to go line by line and kind of figure out whether we, as a council, thought it should be in or out. I had, that doesn't really fit the motion debate way that we do businesses here. And so, I guess what I'm speaking to is, I also wrestle with, with whether we have it right. And would love to hear if people have ideas about things that are currently on the list that we should maybe change.
Counselor Southcott.
Yeah, just one further thought. Thank you, Chair. I am willing to change my mind about this and send this resolution to council, knowing that we can amend it at council, which we have done before, and specifically with regard to this kind of consideration. Because I, I can't support this, and I can't support not supporting it. And that is a real dilemma. And I also will have another motion subsequent to this debate, relevant to this. And it pertains to moving that we arrange to council and the Community Forest Board meet to discuss this further, before two weeks from now. When it comes to council.
Thank you, Chair. You had made a recommendation for a motion for adjustments. If there was only one or two items that I thought to recommend, then I'd happily make an amendment. I will provide another motion if this motion fails, because the recommendations I will suggest are greater than one or two items.
What was your motion?
I said I, I will have a, a different motion. To make an amendment to this would be a nightmare for the corporate officer. So it would be easier to present a different motion versus trying to amend this, would get too confusing.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. What you're saying, I see Counselor Palm's hand.
Thank you, Chair. Healthy discussion all around. You know, seems to be getting far here in terms of our deliberations, because I can see we have a bit of a split vote at this point in time, which means the motion on the screen would be defeated, and we'd be left back at ground zero. So I would suggest that we take the vote, if it gets defeated, that we take Counselor Gout and Counselor Southcott's recommendations, and have further dialogue with our Community Forest Board. Because where we're at right now, we've arrived at without a lot of dialogue, and that concerns me. Because on any issue that we've dealt with for years and years, it's always taken communication and dialogue to come to a resolution. And unfortunately, in regards to our good partners and friends at the Community Forest Board, those discussions have not taken place.
I'm gonna, gonna just suggest it's a bad idea to vote how you guess other people are gonna vote. And I'd be suggesting we make up our minds and vote the way we think is appropriate for the motion that's on the floor. Counselor Almeida, you're a third time speaker. Do you want to make a comment on the motion?
Thank you. Well, I re, I made a comment before that I had a motion that I would discuss. So I realize that, not knowing what that is, that would be, make it hard to vote on this current motion on the floor. So I would actually like to move that we defer this vote to like 10 minutes from now. And I can then present my alternate option, which can then be debated and voted on, and then we can come back to this one if the alternate option doesn't pass.
Oh, here we go. We're using our new procedure bylaw to do all kinds of exciting things today. We don't need a second ear for the motion. So any discussion on Counselor Almeida's motion to defer a decision until, what time is it now? Until 6:29.
Sorry, Chair, a motion to defer is not to have any debate, so you are just to vote on a motion to defer.
And we have a motion to defer to 6:29, and we don't need a second ear, and we don't need any debate. So all those in favor of deferring the decision? Oppose? So, the motion is defeated. So, back to the main motion. Counselor Isaac.
A quick question to perhaps the working group, the Community Forest Working Group on council. We talk about, there hasn't been good communication. Hasn't the working group been in communication with the Community Forest on this list?
So we had a couple of meetings. We've got our terms of reference approved by council. And we've had a number of preliminary conversations. The timelines were a little bit crunched, and one of the things we were trying to do was gain information about the, the Community Forest reserves that we could use as part of our discussions. And we didn't, that, that information was delayed to this report. And so, we didn't have the necessary information to have a conclusive discussion at that level. Otherwise, we would have brought those recommendations from that committee back to council as well, which we, we didn't have that chance. So as part of that response, though, what I recommended, because of timelines and, and all of our communities that are relying on us to make a decision about their grants, was that they would proceed as we've done before and submit their recommendations rather than delay them.
Okay, thank you. So, second round comment on this topic. Yeah, I want to reiterate that all of the, all of the projects that are proposed are worthwhile. The question is, given my perspective on community resources and community asset needs, we have to make hard decisions. There's, there's a, a phrase sometimes used in the philanthropic community when having to decide between many worthy projects. There's a bit of a joke, well, no one's kicking puppies. Like, no one's, everyone's doing good work. It's just a matter of trying to prioritize with finite resources. And so, I think it is time to make hard decisions. I feel like when we make hard financial decisions during budget time, it's very clear where we have, where we're cutting and where we're, where things are costing. It's easy to make decisions right now that have hypothetical implications for taxes. But what's going to happen is, we get to next year, or three years from now, or four years from now, as the rec center projects start to pop up, and people again are going to be asking, like, why are, you know, why are taxes so high? And it's like, well, we've got projects that we didn't save for, that we didn't hold reserves for. And that's not just true this year, this is over decades. And so, I don't want to continue doing that, because we're just passing the buck to, to future taxpayers. And we're feeling that this year, taxes are so high, in part because it's been easier in the past to defer and not put savings away for future projects. And, and so, I, I don't want to continue with that, with that process. It feels a little bit disconnected. Yes, this is a conversation about Community Forest, recommendations to community projects. But as a city councillor, for me, all of those decisions are tied together. I'm looking at the big picture, and it's not a great decision that I feel good in my heart about. I don't think it's, it's good for relationships for me personally in the community. But I, I feel like, with my mind of being a responsible steward of city resources, the prudent decision for me is to, to not support this motion. And to echo what Counselor Almeida said, it's not an issue of, of an amendment of taking one or two off. It's, it's deeper than that. And so, I think it makes more sense to make an alternative motion. Thank you.
Okay. Been around at least twice, mostly three times. Asked the question, the motion on the screen. All those in favor? Those opposed? I have a motion to be defeated. Counselor Almeida.
Thank you, Chair. Corporate officer has my new motion that should be up on the screen in a second. And we'll read it out, and I can then explain it afterwards. I move that the committee recommend to council to direct staff to prepare funding agreements in accordance with Option A outlined in Appendix D of the June 3, 2025 report to the committee of the whole titled Powell River Community Forest 2025 Spring Grants with the following adjustments. Project 392 reduced by half to 41,368 and 50 cents. Project 402 removed. And Project 352 has 75,000 allocated towards the Academy of Music Roof Reserve, a total of 247,079 and 88 cents, leaving 178,234 and 12 cents for fall granting. I'm ready? Thank you. So, some of the reasoning, Option A had provided most of this, that staff had recommended. I, I made a couple of suggestions. One, I reduced the lawn bowling club's grant request by 50%. Open that, like, we're looking at the Lang Bay Community Club, that they can find some other resources to help with that project. And I'm actually removing the Central Farmers Market grant in this case, just for a couple of reasons. One being that with the market starting in 11 days, and typically projects being, receiving funding before acquiring materials, I, I don't know how that's going to be possible. And also similarly to the reasoning provided by staff regarding, well, even by Community Forest regarding Sunshine Music Festival equipment, just seems like the market to have equipment that they have there, used for 10th of the year, when last year's night market, everyone provided all their own tables if they were a vendor. So I feel like I'm, I'm fully supportive of the Central Farmers Market, but I feel like we're a little premature in, in that grant right now. And then staff had given a bunch of recommendations to, to wait on, and I followed suit with those recommendations as per Option A, pretty much. The roof, was the Academy of Music was, the idea was to just start a partial contribution towards that roof, because it'll always be a big project. And to keep a little bit aside now, so that when that project comes to fruition in a couple of years, it's not as big of a dent. That's the reasoning behind those three.
Thanks. I, I support this motion generally. I, the rationale behind a lot of the, that staff provided to not include some of them, given some realities and concerns and good practice and, and potential other opportunities, I think are, I accept them as valid. And, you know, when I think about some of the most challenging issues facing our, facing our community, this represents a balance. And given the information about the status of the Academy of Music roof, I support putting some money towards, some money towards that, I think, given that we maybe have new information since that staff we're relying on about the status of the roof.
Don't see any other hands, so... I don't agree with the motion. I won't support it. I agree with the recommendations we have from the Community Forest. I, I am perfectly sure that the farmers market folks will be able to follow what's going on here. And if Kent don't approve money for the debt that they're asking for, and pull off on the freaking page, hurting within a couple of days, they must have some kind of plan. They, they, I should have proved all this stuff earlier, but I don't think, hey, you don't have time. We heard from the Community Forest Board that the James Hall roof, it's deteriorating faster than it's expected. And I don't know how you go about contributing, fixing a portion of the roof. Not sure how, you know, if you're fixing the one picture for the three years from now. I've preferred the previous motion, to make amendments to remove or add things to it, to carefully discuss that, to include an opportunity to relook at the five-year plan. But that's my thing. I, I think we should be going with the Community Forest's directions as much as we can. Counselor Palm.
Yes, so just follow up that comment here with, this motion presently that is on the floor gets defeated. I intend to make the next motion.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion on the screen? All those in favor of the motion on the screen? All those opposed? Motion is defeated. Four to two. I think to make sure my math is right, it's getting. Councillor Palm, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, sure. Just gonna call worship, but here.
Do that.
I will make the following motion and then I will speak to it. And that is I move that we endorse all recommendations of the community twenty three thousand, five forty thousand, zero cents. The simple reason that we are at present, video of the whole. This is an opportunity to hash things out, healthy discussion. But at least to get to the next council table, further discussion, we need to pass a motion. This is the one Sir Doug is speaking to that he would endorse. I endorse it. Let's get it out there to a council meeting. Give you further time and thought. And you can bring your comments to that one time and you can hash it out finally at that council meeting.
Was that just for clarity is your motion the one that's on the screen now, Councillor Palm?
Send it. Fall into. But this week or?
Up to you for the chair.
Oh, depending on how much time you want. You just have this one.
Any other discussion? Hello?
Thank you. So I just want to address this idea that we would pass something today that we're not willing to pass at council. I think the hard work should be done here today that we should come to a resolution around what it is we want to recommend to council. And and try to come to consensus around where that where that is. I think it creates uncertainty in our community to not make that decision today so that we can have our community members who have made application have a little bit of faith in whether their grant's going to be approved or not based on our conversation today. And I know that it isn't approved till it's approved and council can always change their mind. But I think we should make best efforts to to land on something we can all live with here today so that we aren't just rehashing this same conversation in two weeks. So I'm not in favor of not having that conversation today. This is where we should have it. This is where we should figure out what we can agree on and put that forward as a recommendation to council. I think we've landed on a couple end posts that neither was passed. And clearly, we're going to have to find something up the middle in order to get through today. And so I don't, I don't think this resolution would pass. I'm more in favor of proposals that are somewhere in the middle of where we've already bookended. And so that's my comment on this motion.
I'm just, it's worth in, we've had, we've had a couple of resolutions. We've had a resolution that councillor Elliott proposed. We had the resolution that councillor Almeida proposed. Having trouble getting to the details of what we can get the majority to agree to. I agree that postponing isn't always the best idea. But I'm prepared to support this with the view that when it gets to council, we should be ready if we want to make amendments, actually stand up and make the proposed amendments, take them and finish the debate. But it has to wait for two weeks and, you know, narrow way through it. I would support this just so we can get somewhere and make a decision of some kind today. What else? Councillor Ivan.
Thank you, Chair. I don't support this for the same reason that I don't, didn't support councillor Elliott's motion. It's the difference is not very significant. The number is very similar. And my rationale stands. I I realize it would be good to send something to council that we could then amend. And I would rather, I would rather start small and argue the merits of what to add rather than starting big and arguing what to cut. These aren't great conversations to have, but we got to have them. And that would be my preference, so I don't support this motion.
Anything other than that?
Just one more comment.
Absolutely pumped.
Your Chair, and that is if we were to send this to council, I would allow the mayor to weigh in on vote as well and hear the debate. Fortunately, he's in travels and cannot be here. Think to be fair to him, sending this forward is the right thing to do so that all discuss the outcome.
Deputy Corporate Officer, you're trying to get my attention?
Chair, I was just wanting to confirm, but I think councillor Palm might have answered if it was intended to be referred to council on the seventh or the nineteenth.
Seventh or the when? I think we're looking at two weeks. Give everybody a chance to get their ducks in a row and figure out what they want to do or don't want to do. Councillor Almeida, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to clarify that because I believe the mayor is away all this week, so he wouldn't be here on Thursday either.
He is not going to be at our meeting on Thursday.
To delay it to the council meeting of the night.
My suggestion.
Put that on.
Okay, so I don't see anybody with any hands up with anything to add. All those in favor of the motion? Be opposed? That's defeated too. What's your pleasure, folks? Councillor Southcott.
Acknowledging there's a risk in too many because we can't make the same one twice if we change our mind. I move that on appendix D scenario A, all the supported items plus 352, which is the Academy of Music Roof, and half of 410, which is the healthcare auxiliary you sent to council.
I forget that. Appendix D scenario A. Is that correct? Your recommendation?
Appendix D scenario A.
Or ten?
Four ten, Paul River Healthcare Auxiliary.
Just to clarify it through the Chair, is that then a total of two hundred and twenty five thousand? Is that what you're recommending? The top portion of appendix A? Appendix D, I should say?
Yes, the two twenty five plus two ninety of the Academy of Music Grant and half of the approximately three oh eight for the healthcare auxiliary.
Did you have something to say?
Oh, if anyone's curious about the dollar number, it's six hundred and sixty nine thousand and change. Corporate officer wants the exact one again. Three, seven, six and sixty nine cents if you're interested.
I'm always happy to see all kinds of details, but I'm also always wary that when you're writing numbers down, if you make a mistake, it's in the minutes and it's a decision that you've made. Councillor Southcott, on your motion?
Yeah, I support this because for as much of the reason that I want to see something go to council and in view that this can be amended any way we want to when we get there. But I feel we need to send something to council.
Other comments?
Chair, I'll just say, I tried that with my last motion.
Okay, we might, you know, I hear what people are saying. Let's, you know, if you have something that's going to forward the debate. Councillor Isaacson, do you have a comment?
I'll let it wait for council if this passes.
All those in favor of the motion? All those in favor of the motion on the screen?
Hold on.
I think she's making the numbers on the screen accurate.
We're just waiting. Oh, we don't want to give staff a chance to see what they're trying to do. No.
Problem?
It isn't quite the wording that I was moving.
Councillor Elliott, can you just? Councillor Southcott made a motion. Staff is trying to record it properly. Councillor Southcott can correct it if it's wrong. And we will debate it as a council.
Did you want? There we go.
Councillor Southcott, is that the motion that you wanted to make?
Specifically with regard to option A, I mentioned the supported list and was including the other two items from the not currently supported for reasons provided in report. So I believe the word supported needs to go in there in order to be what the motion is that I, sorry, I didn't write this out for you. Yeah, thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? Councillor Palm?
Just for the record, Chair, I will state that I cannot support this motion because I'm worried about the future and the continued great support of our community partner, volunteers of our community forest.
What else? And all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Oh, motion is defeated. That's involved in a time. Oh, I'm going to suggest that we have another coffee break. I hope there's some coffee. Sometimes things get magically resolved during a five minute coffee break rather than go around the table and have another series of motions that are defeated because it's a tie vote. Maybe we have a, take a minute, think about stuff and get back together. But.
I don't mind a break, Chair, but what I would like to do after we come back from the debate, because there's all kinds of people waiting here for our discussion on development, that we deal with that and then come back to community forest at the end because we're not going to get anywhere.
I I think we, if we, it reminds us to, we could come fairly quickly to a resolution, hopefully to move forward and get something in front of council.
We haven't, we haven't demonstrated much other than dysfunction.
Well, let's try taking a break and getting back together and see where we go.
I think we're doing just fine, guys. Good job.
Some progress. Councillor Southcott? All suitably refreshed and our minds clear. What's your pleasure, folks? Don't see anything. I'm just going to suggest we put this on the July, on the June 19th agenda. Councillor Elliott?
I do have a motion to try. It has a bit of a different approach, and we'll see where we get with it. I move that, and I think I've emailed it to, for up on the board. I move that the committee recommended council that we approve grants up to $748,494.09 for the 2025 year, from the Community Forest Reserve Fund. And I believe it will come up on the screen shortly. But how I arrived at that number is I again removed the $40,000 for the townsite bus stations because they're already in the budget. I again removed "Mick Lot Together We Can", and then I reduced a number of projects so that we are giving a grant for them, but not total grants. Friends of Cathet, I moved from $20,000 to $10,000 because that's still a lot of coats and support. The Lang Bay Community Club, I reduced from $19,775 down to $10,000. And I think that they could maybe try to find the other funding over at some other places, hopefully. The Timberlane Fine Arts, reduced by $30,000 down to $78,271. And I'm hoping they can use those funds to raise the remainder elsewhere. PR Lawn Bowling, from $82,737 down to $42,737, which is just over half of their project for adding accessibility into that building. The PR Farmers Agriculture, which is the putting the concrete into the concept thing. The board did mention that it could be phased, and they could do, they would be happy with a lower grant. So I suggested we lower that by $40,000 down to $41,948. The Power River Hospital Auxiliary, that is a really large project, and I want to contribute, but I'm not sure that we need to be the only funder in that picture. So minus 100 off of that, down to $207,856.61. And the market, from $12,000 down to $6,000 because they could just start with less tents. And hopefully, maybe build up next year for their operations as well. And that removed a total of $284,046 in total from the budget, with that landing at $748,494.09. And so, the idea...
Hang on a second. I'm waiting for the screen to stabilize so that I can then ask you if that's the motion you want to make on the screen.
Yes. And so, my thinking behind that was to try and provide a grant for all of the e-groups that the Community Forest Board has recommended us provide a grant to. I'm looking to hopefully land in a spot where we can get a motion forward that could be approved in two weeks when it comes to council. I'm not a big fan of just shoving it forward and doing our debate there because it provides a lot of uncertainty for a lot of people who are relying on grants. And so I thought if we could come to consensus here and put forward a number that people could stand behind, that that would be better for everybody involved. And so I'm trying to get there.
Councillor Isaacson?
Thank you, Chair. I don't know if this, we'll see if I land on a question. I think I support...
This is a debate about the motion.
Well, I might have a question for the intent of the motion, that's why, but we'll see if I get there. I support the motion in the sense that it's somewhere in the middle, and it might be something that could get the majority of support to start a place of debate from at the next, at the June 19th council meeting. My concern is that you've listed a number of amounts that aren't in this motion. The motion itself doesn't provide certainty to community groups, and I don't, I don't necessarily think it needs to. I don't agree with some of the specific amounts that you've shared. All that being said, those aren't in the motion. And so if we were to move this to a future council meeting, I think we would end up deliberating each item by item, perhaps starting with your suggestions. But I don't think this provides a sense of security to community organizations. But I'm okay with that. I'm okay with meeting somewhere in the middle and getting to a place where we do have to have a robust debate about amounts that are different, both from staff report and from, from the Community Forest Board. But overall, my desire is to be much closer to the staff recommendations, more in line with the motion that Councillor Almeida made. And so I support this in the sense of moving the discussion forward. But whether I support landing on that exact number, because it says for up to, I support that, that number, I would see where we get to in debate. Thank you.
Councillor Palm?
Thank you, Chair. Just for clarification, would you move this forward to the 19th so that they may be here in discussion?
Motion is Councillor Elliott's motion?
That's what I'm asking, Councillor.
Yeah, I believe that that's our normal schedule, is to have things coming from committee a whole in two weeks to council, unless we decide otherwise. So I haven't specified in the motion, but I believe that's our normal practice.
Well, I'll just wrap up my comment by saying that this motion goes against staff recommendation, and it also goes against our valued community partners and Community Forest recommendation. Doesn't satisfy either party, and it's a no crying. Thank you, Chair.
Any other hands up? No, I agree with Councillor Palm, is that we're not saying yes to the Community Forest, and we're not saying yes to staff that we agree with either one. What we're doing is moving forward to council with a number. The number can change, constituent grants can change. It can all change two weeks from now. I'm willing to support this so we can make some kind of decision to move as forward as we can get. This doesn't solve the problem and doesn't finish everything. Two weeks, hopefully council will have moved forward in their consideration. And we're going to end up doing a line-by-line decision on each one of those grants that have been applied for, council making a decision. Do that, hopefully on the 19th. I'll support it because it gets us doing something, but it's not what my choice would be. Don't see any other hands. All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Councillor Palm is opposed, and the motion carries. Community Forest Board, thank you for your contributions and for coming and spending all the time you did here, and we'll invite you back again in a couple of weeks. And again, I thank, I urge everybody, the Community Forest Board and city staff, not to take these decisions personally. Council is faced with tough decisions, and we're trying to do them the best we can. Thanks for your contribution. Well, that gets us down to the next non-controversial item on our agenda, which is item 10.3, Zoning Amendment 122 Beach Gardens Complex. And I think we have the structure of planning on the screen. Mr. Gao, would you like to make some comments of what we're actually talking about tonight?
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, the, the purpose of the report before you is to present a summary of the correspondence received following initial engagement with nearby residents related to the combined zoning and land use designation amendment application received for the Beach Gardens complex. So following the April 3rd council meeting where staff presented the application that proposes to amend the city's official community plan and zoning bylaw, notice was mailed to 139 owners and occupiers of land within a minimum distance of 100 meters from the boundaries of the subject property. The mail-out was successful, and the planning services staff received numerous inquiries by phone and across the counter from those who were notified of the proposal. In terms of correspondence, the city received one petition with 33 signatures and 16 letters and/or emails. And those are attached to the staff report for your convenience. The petition with 33 signatures is signed almost exclusively by residents that live on Westminster Street. The petitioners request that council require two conditions should council approve the application, and those are, first, that a proper and safe transportation route be established to deal with the traffic flow from the Beach Gardens Resort. And second, that all traffic be precluded from entering the corner of Westminster and Caribou Avenue. In addition, all traffic should be precluded from entering Caribou with the exception of a properly controlled intersection near the top of Caribou. As for the 16 pieces of correspondence received, all authors express that they have concerns with the proposal, and almost all state that they are opposed and request that council deny the application. The most common areas of concern are increased traffic and associated safety, parking, how increased density will impact the existing neighborhood character, and whether there is adequate infrastructure capacity to support a development of this scale. These are the themes, are, sorry, these themes are explored in the staff report while other less frequently identified concerns are not. The top concern for those who provided feedback is the impact of increased traffic and associated safety. And so staff have recommended that the applicant's consultant, CTS Traffic Engineering Specialists, who prepared the traffic impact assessment, be invited to present their findings at a future meeting of council. This would be an opportunity for council and the community to hear firsthand how the consultant prepared the assessment and came to their conclusions. Council would also be able to ask clarifying questions of the consultant regarding their methods and findings to gain a better understanding of how safety considerations were factored into that assessment. The second common area of concern relates to parking, and more specifically, the impact that parking may have on the surrounding neighborhoods due to concern that the proposed development will not meet the off-street parking requirements laid out in the zoning bylaw. And this is likely because of information included in the applicant's conceptual plan that indicated onsite parking requirements would not be met based on the proposed design, and a variance would need to be achieved. One of the points made in the original report was that the drawings provided by the applicant at this stage are conceptual, and neither the applicant nor the city are bound to the, the design as shown. This means that regardless of what was indicated in the conceptual plans, the applicant would have to receive a variance granted by council to deviate from bylaw requirements. The focus of this application is land use and density. The focus of this application is land use and density and any consideration for variances, for example, to building height, the sightings of buildings, required infrastructure or onsite parking minimums are not being considered at this time. If the current application is successful and the subject lands are rezoned to RM4, the owner could apply to have council consider a variance to bylaw requirements at a future point. I'll just point out that variance applications include a public notification component as a requirement before council can consider approval of the variance request. Another area of concern identified by the respondents is the impact to neighborhood character by permitting increased density. And this is a challenging issue to reconcile because of the existing development rights held by the landowner. Please consider that without having to rezon to RM4, the current RM3 zoning applied to these lands allows for a development with a similar intensity. One respondent asked about the number of units that could be built on the parcel currently zoned RM3. The answer is a range of 190 to 278 apartment units depending on whether an amenity space is provided and whether 60% of the required parking is provided underground. I will say that this calculation does not include the impact on unit count based on setback requirements, building height maximums, or lot coverage, as these considerations are development specific. But the permitted range of units is in keeping with the 250 units, sorry, 215 units proposed in the applicant's conceptual design. And this suggests that neighborhood character, although not built yet, already includes a higher density development at this location. Development rights were awarded years ago when this property was granted RM3 zoning. Lastly, another area of concern identified was whether there's adequate infrastructure available to support this development proposal. This could include the capacity of in-ground infrastructure such as water, storm, sanitary, sewer servicing. It may also include above-ground infrastructure such as roads and sidewalks. As for concerns about the adequacy of existing infrastructure, it's important to highlight that land use determines infrastructure requirements and not the other way around. And this is because the decision to amend land use is council's purview and capacity and infrastructure can be built. It's just a question of whether the cost justifies the long-term benefit. It's also important to highlight that developers bear the cost of providing the necessary infrastructure upgrades and not the taxpayer. And I highlight this because there seemed to be some confusion about who pays for development in the correspondence received. Moving to next steps, as recommended, the next step could be to hear from the consultant who prepared the traffic impact assessment. And depending on their availability, staff could aim to coordinate schedules so that the draft amendment bylaws that were directed, or sorry, that staff were directed to develop at the April 3rd council meeting are presented on the same day. That's all that I have to say at this time, but I'm here for any questions should you have any.
So I just want to clarify what you're basically saying, that council tonight, Mr. Gao, and I think your recommendation is that we invite the traffic study people to come and make a presentation to council and talk about all the details and give council an opportunity to ask questions and become comfortable with the study and its recommendations. And after that, there would be discussions and about whether to go forward or any changes to the OCT, any changes to zoning or requirements for services of any kind that might be decided after that. Am I correct?
Chair, yes, thank you Chair, you are correct.
Okay, so I'll just open the floor to questions from council and I think just leave it at that. Counselor Elliott.
Thank you Chair. Director Gao, I'm just wondering if we have more comments or information or whether you can help me understand the licensing requirement from the liquor board and their requirements for access? Is that a general requirement or was it specific to this location? Or is it like a rule for all liquor establishments? I don't know much about it and I just thought maybe you could help me with that.
Through the chair to Counsel Elliot, I will say that more research will have to be done with the LCRB. I do note that the letter that's being referenced in the correspondence package is from 19, I think, 74. And I expect that the LCRB has changed some of their policies.
And would answers around that be forthcoming?
Through the chair to Counsel Elliot, yes. So again, this is information that we will spend more time assessing at some point when we're looking at the broader proposal. At this stage, we're just talking about the initial engagement. I think when we come forward with our bylaw amendments, we'll have some of that information in hand.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Isaacson.
Thank you. One question, you've clarified it a bit in the report, but I want to get a sense of what is, what are the important considerations for us at this stage of the process? And so we're focusing on rezoning or potential rezoning at this time. And so things like height variances and setbacks and parking, that is all taken care of at the development stage. And if there are variances requested, those would come to council. From my understanding, some of the pieces that are more important for us to consider at this point and might be included in the conditions that are included in the bylaw amendments to zoning would involve, like the infrastructure piece that you mentioned, that it's subject to, that they've done their study and, you know, given what they find out, they may not want to move forward with this project. So a condition related to infrastructure. And then I think where I am a bit lost as to where it gets included is the traffic piece. So especially that Caribou Westminster intersection and access from the hotel, given the intended zoning lines, the traffic coming out of the hotel would have to come out to that intersection if it wasn't given a covenant across the RM, the proposed RM4 above it. So can you explain to me where the traffic considerations fit into this phase versus future phases of considering a potential development on this site in the future?
Through the chair to Counsel Isaacson, I think one of the challenges here is, you know, the concerns have been raised. There's a number of concerns about traffic by the residents and owners and occupiers of land. You know, there is a traffic impact assessment. I think that there is some concern from those that responded about the validity of that assessment. And I think it would be fair for the author of that assessment to come speak to that. At some point, council is going to have to be satisfied with that, with that assessment to move forward is my guess. And if you're not, that's where I think that council would either have to ask staff to invest in a peer review, something along those lines. I think I go back to the idea that it's going to have to be council that's satisfied with that assessment for you to move forward with approval for a decision related to land use. Unfortunately, the city doesn't have traffic engineers on staff. And so we do rely heavily on what I refer to as the professional reliance model. We are looking to the experts, those that have the background and understanding in a field of this nature. And again, zoning is a discretionary approval of council. You have the power to agree or disagree and you can show that by approving or denying an application.
Just a clarifying question on your response. I am, to be honest, forgetting the traffic study from last time. I seem to remember it focused on the highway and less on the side streets. Is my memory, do I need to just read that again? And/or if it's not included, how does that become to be considered as a part of our process?
Through the chair to Counsel Isaacson. So it considers certain intersections, Caribou, Lilowet. I think one that was pointed out by members of the community that responded was that it didn't pick up on Thunder Bay at Joyce Avenue. I think that's a good question for council to ask of the consultant why that wasn't included. And that might create some conversation about expectations that perhaps the assessment needs to be re-looked at. But to your second question, you know, where does that come in in the process? I mean, there's multiple readings for processes like this. We've got to buy two bylaws that are going to require four readings. And so I think again, can we move forward with some assurance that council will get the answers that you're looking for in terms of traffic safety? Or do we run into a place where council is not satisfied with what you've received? I do think we are going to be reliant on a traffic expert to kind of address some of the concerns that have been raised by members of the community and I think even council in the last time I presented this.
I have more questions, but I'll wait till the second round.
I have just got a comment to make. And I've, you know, I've read all of the letters that have come in from all the various people and their concerns about traffic and other things. But really, the motion that staff is requesting is a motion to have the people who did the traffic study come to council and answer whatever questions council can think of about the traffic study and all the implications. I went through and I read the traffic study, actually more than once, I read it a few times. But I could understand all of the different intersections that are part of that report, what time of day the traffic is going and which direction, how many people are turning left and right on different streets that are feeders. And I read the part of the report that says that the site plan with the various roads penciled in is a very preliminary site plan. It is not a conclusive site plan and will change as we go through approvals for subdivision and all of those things. So we will never know exactly what the right answer is until we see a final plan. We probably won't get to a final plan until we get the traffic engineers to come and say what they learned. They're the people who are trained to do it, people who have the professional background in doing this traffic studies and they can let us know what's going on there. And, you know, the, both of the side streets were in the report. I went, I've driven down and looked at them. They don't seem to me like they're going to support a lot of traffic, although the report says that they're a typical two-lane road. Pretty hard to see that when you drive down to the end of the road where there isn't a cul-de-sac to turn around. You know, those are all questions to ask when they come back with the traffic studies. And that's the recommendation of today's report, to invite the traffic engineers to come and give us their report. And then, and we can get to do with that. As to roof height and building size and mass and how much parking, that's further down the process. And I look forward to doing that. Counselor Elliott.
Thank you Chair. So further to Counsel Isaacson's query, if council thought that a road dedication or separate access other than the roads that are already there needed to be part of the plan, would that have to be identified at this stage? Like would there have to be one in this particular stage? Or would that be something we would have a chance to address at a different time? And that's just a question around processes. Are we trying to make sure we have the right road dedications at this stage?
Through the chair to Counsel Elliot, so road dedication can be taken at times of subdivision. It's one of the only times it can be taken. However, there are processes that we have used in the past where we require road dedication as a condition or a subject condition of zoning, recognizing that we would not as a city get an opportunity to take road dedication at a future time. So I think that there is some value in understanding, you know, the proposal and specifically the off-site works and services in greater detail. And so I think again, when staff put our minds to this, there is likely going to be subject conditions that speak to understanding the civil infrastructure that's going to be required to ensure, for example, and I appreciate the respondent who pointed out that there is a hydro corridor or infrastructure that sends electricity to Texada that runs right down the edge of Caribou, which is going to be very hard to widen that particular piece of road. And so there may be a requirement to take road dedication on the side to the west of that, widen this corridor even more. And so the city is limited to how much road dedication it can take. I should say the approving officer is limited to how many, how much road dedication it can take by the land title act. But this may be an opportunity to look at, do we need 25 meters of road dedication to accommodate this central hydro corridor? And so those are things that staff are starting to look at at this stage. Do we have all the answers at this point? We don't because it's likely going to come as a condition of, of a subject condition, I should say, you know, prior to second reading of the bylaw, we require this so that we can do further investigation. But that's where multiple readings are beneficial because it allows staff to draw out further information to allow us to make decisions and recommendations to council.
Thank you.
Good Chair, just a quick question to Mr. Gao. In terms of the traffic study, will this consultant be consulting with highways specifically to bring their perspective on traffic flow to the table as well?
Through the chair to Counsel Palm, so the reason that the traffic impact assessment was completed because is when the city referred out the application to the Ministry of Transportation. It was the Ministry of Transportation that said, we would like to see a traffic impact assessment. The city supported it, of course, because we thought it would be great to have that as part of any kind of application going forward. But it was the ministry's requirement, the ministry has reviewed it. And I do need a little bit of clarity on, from our area manager here, whether or not they've concluded their review. But my recollection is that they said that they were in support of the findings.
Thank you. And the second question is, in terms of density and height, which are concerns of the neighborhood, what is the benefit of the developer moving from RM3 to RM4? What's the benefit there and what does it do for height or density, if anything?
Through the chair to Counsel Palm, so RM3 is an older zone of the cities. It regulates density by unit count. And the height between RM4 and RM3 is 13.5 meters for apartments. The height for condos or, sorry, townhouses is lower in the RM3 zone. But for apartments, it's 13.5 meters, both in RM3 and RM4. RM4 measures density by what we refer to as FAR, floor area ratio. And so we're not measuring it by the number of units, we're measuring it by the amount of building that's being placed on the property. It's a more modern way of measuring density and it allows developers to build to the market rather than trying to get the most bang for their buck and building, you know, larger units, say, because they want to maximize their gross floor area.
Last question, council would probably have a say in terms of the upper level buildings being a certain height. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct, yes. So that would be, again, to this idea of variance, again, 13.5 meters is the maximum currently stated in the RM4 zone. And so if there was an application to exceed that, it would be through a development variance permit application that council would need to approve.
Escape's being important. Thank you very much.
Any other hands? Would somebody like to move the recommendation? Counselor Elliott.
I move that staff be directed to invite the applicant's consultant, CTS Traffic Engineering Specialists, who prepared the traffic impact assessment in support of the proposed zoning and land use designation amendment application to present their findings at a future meeting of council.
Unanimously. New business of the City of Powell River Draft 2024 will report. Deputy Corporate Officer, it's your turn. Get in the spotlight.
Thank you Chair. To the Chair and Council, this is a relatively easy one for the night. This is simply for your information, the report's attached, you also have it before you. This will be available for feedback and inspection. This will be available for feedback and action from both yourselves and the public for the next two weeks and brought back on July 19th for approval. Thank you.
Just jump right in. And I took a look at it this afternoon, and I realized right away that Counselor Douth is not a municipal director on the regional district. And Counselor Southcott is. You know, hopefully that could be corrected before we publish the permanent one. Counselor Southcott credit for the hard work he does days a month.
Thank you. With regard to that, I did notice that too. And I really appreciate all the work that goes into doing a report like this. But I only became municipal director, I think, in October. So is that relevant to? I'm just fine with not being in there. And I definitely credit Counselor Douth with spending, I think, six years in that seat. Deserves the credit.
All I'm considering is the accuracy of it. And I didn't go through all the words in the whole thing. See if I could find any errors. I just looked at the first couple of pages, see if anything jumped out. Counselor Isaacson?
A related question. This is an annual report, so it's meant to be accurate as of December 31st. So, for example, our previous CAO Bo Paul Singh, no longer our CAO, but on December 31st was our CAO. And so I'm wondering, yeah, the switch over from Counselor Douth to Counselor Southcott would have been true at December 31st. And I don't think that the appointments, the alternates to the regional district are listed here. Maybe I don't think they were ever, so they don't need to be added. Okay. So December 31st, that's what I wanted to just check. And I see you've noted. So December 31st, 2024 is when it was accurate as of, intended to be accurate as of.
Any other questions? So it's perfect, except for one little item. Oh, there.
You can remove my coastal community social procurement initiative, council representative. The committee has changed and in structure. The initiative has changed in structure, so.
And Chair, sorry if I may add, you're certainly welcome, excuse me, as you find other, if you find other things to send me an email at any time, and I'll bring a list of the collective, collected suggestions to June 19th. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to send it to council in two weeks? No? Okay.
Need any resolutions? All we need to do is say thank you to the corporate officer for putting this together. And I hope everybody in town reads it. And because there's a ton of information in there. It stops.
We can add it to the summer reading club.
Summer Reading Club, it'll be good for the beach. So we're almost there. 13.1. Counselor Isaacson has a motion under late items.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the Chair, sorry, Chair, the when the agenda was adopted at 2:00 PM before we went into closed, I asked for an additional item about Pride Month and flagpole vandalism to be added to the agenda. And the motion, which I haven't unfortunately sent to staff, I drafted it and then got distracted by being in this meeting, is that staff work with Cuthat Pride to arrange a city entry into the Pride Parade in July. And I don't need a seconder, so I'll just speak to my rationale. So it is the start of Pride yesterday there when Counselor Douth, acting as acting mayor yesterday, as well as myself and Counselor Elliott, came to participate in the flag raising ceremony. Staff had let us know that the flagpole had been vandalized at some point the day or two before, and all of the flag rope had been removed so that a flag raising wasn't able to happen. There fortunately was a lovely gathering. Some people knew that this had happened and didn't attend, but many people still did attend. We held up a bunch of flags and took a lovely photo and committed to holding the flag raising once the the pole was fixed. And my motion, it's not direct, it's a slightly indirect, but I think Pride Month is a time that I think in a modern way, has often been about celebrating the diverse gender gender identities and sexual orientations and everything about the diversity within the queer community that they bring to our society at large. But more recently, it's also about protecting hard fought wins of the queer community and protecting those from attacks. And so when there are when there are vandalism like this, and the vandalism that I think happened two years ago when the pride flag was cut down, I think it's important for the city to reaffirm its commitment to diversity that we we took two years ago when the same type of vandalism happened. And what could help demonstrate the city's commitment to support would be participating in the Pride Parade in July. We didn't last year, which was the first year, because a number of councillors had already been, had arrangements to be outside of the city. And this year I am here, so I would love to be a part of that. And I think that the city participating in the Pride Parade would be a positive demonstration, both as a council, but demonstrating it to our staff and inviting staff to participate to demonstrate the city's commitment to diversity and celebrating the trans and queer community that exists here and and helping it make, helping us continue to grow ourselves as an inclusive community. Thank you.
Oh, I'm gonna two bits in here. And I think I think that's an excellent idea, probably the city is a flatbed truck or something. And you put some chairs on there and get all of those council members who were there for the day to go into the Pride Parade. I think that would be a good idea. Just want to make some comments about Monday. You know, as at the air, I previously agreed to be there for the flag raising. I got the email from staff about nine o'clock in the morning on the Monday that the staff had talked to the organizers of the event, the Pride organizers, talked about postponing the event. And I thought, well, said I'd be there anyway. And there's probably a lot of people who didn't get the email. I go down to City Hall and see if anybody showed up. And there were a couple of gentlemen sitting on the sidewalk, basically waiting to see who showed up. And they actually had literally bags of different pride flags. At the end of about 10:30, I guess, there were probably 20 people there. And we had a small ceremony. Basically, you know, what I had said is we're not going to let a little bit of vandalized vandalism stand in the way of the community getting together and celebrating inclusion. So we shared the flags, held them up. We couldn't raise them on the pole. But there was a happening that happened there, and the vandalism didn't prevent city from recognizing Pride Month, which it is. And I totally support this motion. And hopefully we'll get the flagpole fixed and we'll get all of the things we need to have and maybe a little more security to make sure that it's harder to vandalize again. That's my two bits. Anybody else? Counselor Elliott?
Yeah. Yeah, it's really sad to see that someone would wreck all of the rigging on our flagpole. I think that's poor form for sure. I support making sure we get to that flag raising this month as soon as we can. I love the idea of participating in the parade. Unfortunately, I am scheduled to be on my vacation away from town at that time. But if I were here, I would love to be part of that. So I'm in favor of the motion. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just for clarification, is this a financial contribution or the staffs just helping organize a float?
Counselor Isaacson? You're just saying you want staff to get that to enter a float.
Yeah. And so not a financial contribution. But they, they asked that people apply to enter into the parade. And so doing whatever needs to happen to to show up in that parade in a good way. So if it means we're all encouraged to walk together in t-shirts, or if there's a flatbed truck, whatever, but some sort of city representation on the parade.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
Counselor Palm?
To the Chair, I would suggest that maybe the Sangha bus being in that parade with councillors aboard.
Bad idea.
Not a bad idea at all. Do we all have to pay $2.55?
Those that supported the Sangha bus.
We can book it in the online app.
Okay. So all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Oh, the next item is public clarification. Is there anyone in the public who would like some clarification? Two minutes maximum.
That's Catherine Yorlefson. I'd like to state before my question. I'm not sure I can stand the stress of zoning amendment 122, but I will do my very best. So when is the first public input? Where in this process do we, as a public, get to freely come with our comments and things? Apparently, there is a time, but I don't know when it is. I don't know the order of this. So I'd like to know that so that then I could be like, ready.
Mr. Gao, I can't see the screen right now, but do you have an answer when, or the CAO, when the public will get input?
The public? So I think there's.
Through the Chair.
Heard your question. I'm asking staff to provide that.
Through the Chair, it's worth highlighting that the changes that came about as part of Bill 44 do play into this. So this is where public hearings are now prohibited for rezoning applications that are proposing housing. So there would not be a public hearing as it relates to the zoning component of this. However, the amendment to the SSCP would have an engagement, sorry, a public hearing. And so, but I think broadly to the Speaker, you know, the Speaker's actually submitted three letters already. So I would actually suggest that that is a form of engagement. The city initiated a notice period, and we received notices or responses back from the public. So that is one form of notice. There is another opportunity that comes about as, again, part of Bill 44 because of the prohibition on public hearings for zoning amendments before a council considers a first reading of an amendment bylaw to a zoning bylaw. There is notices, again mailed and, you know, requests for written correspondence back. So that is another process that will happen. And there would be an opportunity for those that want to provide written correspondence to provide that to city council at that time as well.
May I ask a subsequent question?
Counselor Isaacson, do you have an answer for the question?
A bit of an add-on. I think the difficulty of not having a specific date is the fact that we haven't given staff or staff have not been able to secure the traffic study people, I believe, for a specific date. And so it's not until that that's arranged and on an agenda that we'll know what date it will be. So maybe the question through, through the through the Chair to staff as a follow-up question is in the invitation to the traffic consultants, you mentioned also sharing a draft at that time. Do you have a sense of when that will get to that step, when the traffic consultants are available and when we might see the a potential draft?
Through the Chair to Counsel Isaacson and also for the benefit of the Speaker. So the the direction that I was looking for tonight, I just received that. That is my instruction to go out and reach out to the traffic impact, sorry, assessment authors. So I don't have a specific deadline. That said, the applicant is aware of council schedule and is very eager to see bylaws, draft amendment bylaws placed on an agenda in the near future. I understand that they will be putting their development information signs up in the near future to meet the 28 days prior to council considering first reading. So Thursday would be 28 days before the July 30, sorry, July 3rd council meeting. So just to give you a sense as to where my mind is at. That is. But I also am not committing to that at this point either. It would be later than that.
Thank you.
Can I?
You, Mr. Gao. Counselor Elliott?
Oh, I see. Okay, got it. Sorry.
Do you have an answer to the question?
I do. In addition to what everyone else has said here, I just wanted to clarify that our new procedure bylaw, partly in response to this removal of hearings, public hearings, has added public comment period on every agenda where, where things are coming forward. And so just like today, when my lands on our agenda, you can come and be part of that public comment part. Whenever that is, you don't really, it's not a public hearing, but we've added public input as part of our regular process.
Do you have another question?
A comment on that. I'm thankful for that six minutes each time it's on the agenda. I would like to point out that I tried to be a delegation on this issue, and it has been denied because I'm not allowed to do that until after the first reading. So no public consultation, can't be a delegation. Maybe three of us, if nobody else wants to speak on anything else, can speak for six minutes. Okay, thanks.
Do the other members of the public have any questions? Mr. Golinsky, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chair, for indulging me. I appreciate it. My question, and it's a quick one, relates to item 10.2, which was the power of a community forest. The Chief Financial Officer made mention in her presentation about tax implications of the full amount of the dividend that was being sought by the community forest. In a subsequent motion, the committee recommended to council a figure in the range of $700,000 to be considered by council. I know it's hypothetical, Chair, but I'm wondering if council was to adopt that figure, what the tax implications of that might be. And I'm asking that of the Chief Financial Officer.
Dennis, do you have an answer?
Through the Chair to Mr. Golinsky. I do have some estimates in front of me, but I would like to double check my numbers if you're okay with me emailing you the answer. My original calculations were about 4.8% increase if everything was given. But they've adjusted it. I just want to be sure I've got all my calculations up to date.
I thank the CFO for that. Emailing me the figure would be most appropriate. I thank you, Chair.
Do we have anyone online waiting to ask a question? Any other one, people in the building who might have a question? Don't see any. So I think that brings us to the end of tonight's festivities. See you in a couple of days.